Okay, everybody in now? Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order although I've already opened the meeting at 6:20 because we had to go into executive session and that has to happen from an open meeting. So the meeting was opened at 6:20 and there was a motion and a vote to go into executive session and now we're going to carry on with the normal meeting. I'd like to welcome you all to the June 6, 2020 Weathersfield Select Board Meeting. Would you all please rise, remove your hats? Paul, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda review. I'm gonna ask the board, how do you feel about the minutes? You wanna knock the minutes out at the beginning of the meeting where they are or you wanna move them?
Can I make a point?
Sure.
For the minutes, who's taking minutes tonight?
I forget her name.
Nicole.
Nicole.
I did not get to executive session, so is that a matter of the record?
I have it.
Okay, good. Somebody's got?
Yeah.
Perfect. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
I didn't get there.
Yes, sorry. Okay, so back to agenda review. Any issues with moving the minutes? You wanna move the minutes or do the minutes?
Is the hearing warned at a specific time or not?
Yeah, 6:45.
6:39.
So we got six minutes.
I don't know what...
Alright, so we'll go into the minutes if it starts to carry on then. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 5:22? That's the first set.
So move.
So here, second.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Or corrections?
I don't have a screen in front of me, it's not on. Was I, did I miss one of these meetings out of the three that we're gonna do? So I'm not sure it's right, so...
Yes, you did. This meeting here.
So, the 5:2?
5:2. You're not on here.
Okay, so...
Wait a minute, online. Dave Fuller.
Okay. Yep. Okay, I was online. I didn't know if I missed a meeting. I knew we got three sets of minutes here and I didn't, I don't think it's right that the person making the motion to accept the minutes wasn't at the meeting. I know we can by law, but I'm a little fuzzy on that, so...
Says you were here.
I was online, fine.
No, you're online.
Okay. Any changes to the minutes or corrections? None? Everybody's good? Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor approving minutes of 5:22? Signify by saying aye.
Oh, the second, 5:2, right?
5:2. 5:222.
Yeah, okay.
Aye.
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 Dave?
Yep.
Wendy?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Wow, where does that one end? Sorry folks, this just takes a minute sometimes to get through. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of May 16, 2022?
So moved.
Second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Kelly? Motion been made and seconded? Any discussion?
Is this the one that I missed? Because my name is not recorded.
5:16 is our last meeting, Dave.
You were here.
You were here.
But if you look up top, it says Board Members Present.
I see that.
I'm not there.
You need to be on it.
Yeah. Yeah.
You were here.
Yeah, he was. This is the beginning of the...
The hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay.
You were here.
So that can be a friendly amendment in order for us to pass the minutes to move along?
Yeah, we can still pass them.
Okay.
We just need to add your name up top as being here. Any other changes within the minutes? Okay, hearing nothing. We have a motion to approve the minutes, 5:16. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
The next one he wasn't at.
Exactly. I knew there was one, I couldn't scroll around fast enough. Wasn't that one just to sign something?
Yeah.
Yes. There was a special meeting on 5:18. Motion to approve the minutes of 5:18, 2022?
So moved.
I'll second.
Kelly seconded. This was a, this was an item that was left out of the warrants and the board got together in a special meeting just to approve those warrants. This had to do with the small business grants that had already been approved and some people were expecting to get paid and we can't write the checks without the warrants being signed. So we pulled together, got a meeting together quick and voted to sign, to approve those warrants so that those checks could be written for those people. That's what that meeting was for. I don't, it's very short, I don't see any corrections. Anybody? Everything good?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And that takes care of the minutes. How'd we do? So we still have two minutes.
Mike?
Yes ma'am.
Can I just fill the two minutes with a quick update? Two seconds, just, no?
Um, well...
Okay.
Alright, let's do this then. We'll skip the comments from citizens, topic's not on the agenda. I'll start with you, go.
Okay, so June 18, right around the corner, we're doing a second annual fishing derby, 14 and under, so just letting you know, you can go right on our website and you can register on there. Just if there's any kiddos you know about. It's on 131 in Weathersfield. That's it.
I gotta keep track of this time here. We got one minute to go. You couldn't have stretched that out a little bit?
I'm sorry, I guess I could've. There's gonna be food, it's free.
Is there a band?
There is not a band, but you know, we could work it in.
Well, we've got one minute, so... Anybody else with a short or brief comment? Board member or citizen?
Wow.
We better get busy tonight, I can say that.
I'm confused. I'm here out of interest for the changes in zoning.
Yeah?
Those comments come later?
Yeah, when we get to that topic.
When we get to that, thank you.
Yes, comments not on the agenda.
Got it. Seven seconds.
Seven seconds? Okey dokey, well, seven seconds I can deal with. Because I can get us through that remaining time. So I, the hearing is scheduled for 6:45 and I wanna get into that hearing. So, this hearing was opened, this is a continuation of the hearing that was opened three weeks ago, May 16. It is for the adoption of the bylaws that have been presented here by the Planning Commission. And I will open the floor for comments. I received a letter from Patty Arison. As she's not able to be here tonight, that will be entered into the record. I also received a notice of questions and comments from Todd Hindinger. And those also will be entered into the record. So, where do we wanna start?
Can any of those be read out loud?
Can any of those be read out loud? I'm, no, I'm not gonna read them out loud as they're pretty extensive and most of them were questions that were covered at the last meeting to some degree. So they are a matter of the record, you can read them there. And Todd is here, I'm sure he will ask or raise some of those issues as we proceed this evening. Those comments are just being entered into the record at this time. So, who wants to start? Todd, you gave me written stuff, you wanna get it rolling?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I'd love to. Let me break the ice.
Yes.
And I see Jason is here too, Jason Rascus, and maybe can help us better understand the map. So what I'll do is I'll just skip the map for now and go through what the comments I had. I read the documents and then I tried to make a list of comments that I think if the documents are going to be adopted, before they're adopted, there are some changes that I suggest we make. And so I listed those, those basic comments. They start off, I start off simple with things that are typographical errors, things that the document not being finished, not being complete. So I, before it gets adopted, I'd like to see it cleaned up so that we don't have any relic comments in it and any errors. That's sort of comment number one. The second comment has to do with just the way the use tables are organized, that is, there are certain things that when you read through the document that should be maybe in accessory use category as opposed to principal use category. And the home business one is just an example of that. It's something where in order, you wanna have a business on your property, in order to do that, you have to live on the property and then you can have a certain number of employees and such. But in the use tables, it's listed as a principal use, which it just doesn't make any sense for it to be there. So my second comment was just organizationally, I think that the document for it to be administered should be organized so that things are all in their correct category. That was the second comment. The third comment has to do with, we have, just in administrating this, I wanna say that when we, when you get a permit application, and anybody who works on staff can correct me, but we have traditionally set up a process where if you come in and you do an application for residential use, right? If you own some land and you want to put a house on it or put other, two family residents, you can do that, you just go to the zoning administrator, you get your permit in, it's a very simple application, you just do a little sketch site plan. And if you meet the setbacks for the zoning district, then the zoning administrator can just issue you a permit. It's a permit of use. And then for things that are not residential, those, the commercial would be a good example, there's a site plan review process where the zoning board would look at certain criteria. In these tables, the use tables, there is no specific guidance given for when that site plan review would be done. So there's a lot of new uses that have been brought forward into that, into the use tables that don't include that asterisk or it just happens to be a number one that would require that site plan review. So, but there are other items that do include that site plan review. So it's not clear from the document if we intended to leave site review out for those things or if it's just an oversight. So I think that my comment for this is administratively, we wanna make sure that site plan review happens and to the same extent, when you do site plan review, there's also conditional use review where we might look at other criteria for the project. But this document doesn't make clear why the new stuff doesn't have a number on it. And I couldn't, I couldn't tell from reading it why that would be. And then along that same point, the, when we do, when we do site plan review or conditional use review, we look at, look at all these criteria. Some of them are standards, like a lighting standard, says what lights you can have, what lights you can't have, and you have to submit a plan and so forth. And then other sections of the bylaws don't have strict standards or specifications, so you keep, so what happens is if you take an applicant and an applicant comes in, they do a plan, say they wanna put in a health clinic, right? They're, if we don't have site plan review for that, then we don't have a process to look at something like parking, right? We do, we do have parking standards. Parking's not exactly the best example for that, but, but we don't, like I said, we don't have standards so an applicant wouldn't, there's nothing specific for them to be held to. And then the other sort of general comment is that the, we have this new concept of allowing multiple principal uses on a property. And historically, what we would do is we would have one principal use and an accessory use. So whatever, whatever you wanna do on your property, you get one principal use and one accessory use. The way this is arranged, there's no upper limit set on the number of principal uses. So you could, if somebody, I do this example where I talk about in the Village District. Now it's gonna be half acre for every principal use, so if you own three acres, without an upper limit on the number of uses, you could use six different principal uses. And a principal use would be, say you wanna do a mobile home park and a gas station and a six-unit apartment, right? You could take those, those are just three examples, you could take all those three and you could put them on the same parcel. And then each one of those principal uses could get an accessory use. So I didn't, I didn't understand the logic of, one, we sort of open end the number of uses on a property without having any say in the process about whether those uses would be compatible or not, right? That was, that was troubling for me. I shouldn't say it was troubling for me, it's just a fact in how it's written. And so I, my suggestion was to close that loophole and then put a limit on the number of uses or define a review process for multiple principal uses. I had some comments about the definitions. I think, you know, they're not too critically important, but there were some things that were eliminated in the definition section but are still referenced in the zoning bylaws. So I suggested that that get cleaned up. And then there was one definition that the junkyard was eliminated from the definitions. And my suggestion would be that we get that back in there and we clean up the language of the junkyard. We've been, we've had some challenges here with junkyards, people complaining about neighbor's junk. And the junkyard definition was problematic because it was vague. So my suggestion was that we keep it, but that we clean it up so that it was defined better, so that it'd be useful for resolving conflicts with neighbors. I'd like to pass on my zoning district comments for just a second. And then I wanted to just, I had this couple additional comments. What I noticed, or I think is that, when we, when we propose changes, my suggestion is that we do it as a complete document. So no matter what the Planning Commission wants to change or thinks is necessary, I think we should, they should do it in a way where we create one document that we can look at. Over the last couple of years, we've made changes incrementally and the Select Board has adopted those changes. But there hasn't been, you know, amended document, like on any given date, here is the zoning bylaw that's adopted. And I just happen to be on the zoning board and it's challenging, it's challenging just to keep up. Now, when we get these documents, even now as we speak, we don't have one finished document to refer to. We're still trying to make, you know, understand this patchwork. So this is just a basic comment, like whatever changes we wanna make, let's kick out the whole document, you can highlight those changes, but let's keep this thing alive and working and published up on the website so we can refer to it. That's just a suggestion. And then I had, I think, I'll save my final comments. Because they're really just my personal view on the issue. So I'll save those, because I'd like to hear a little bit more about the map and I'd like to sort of make sure everybody else gets a chance to talk about the map and anything else. Those were just the facts of how I read the bylaw change.
Okay. Robert's Rules of Order suggests that we have somebody speak in favor of a motion, even though we don't have a motion, we're just in discussions. And Mr. Hindinger has spoke what sounds like in somewhat of opposition to what we're here for. So is there anybody here that is in favor of this change that would like to go next? Anybody at all? No? Everybody's against it? Yes? Speak your name, please.
Jane O'Wender. When you say this change, could you be a little more clear so that everybody knows exactly what, I think...
Well, I was just making a general statement about, we're here talking about zoning bylaw changes.
Correct.
Okay. So that's what we're here talking about. So I was just making, if somebody is here that wants to speak in favor of the changes, they can go next. That's all I was saying, at this point. Okay? And I didn't see anybody, so...
I can say I'm in favor for sure. I think there's a lot of limitations in Weathersfield of what you can and can't do. There are large portions of hand...
State your name.
Sorry, Mandy Martel. There are large portions that can never be occupied, that there's, I think it's 80% of our town is C10. There's really not a lot of wiggle room with that. That's the most, if I'm wrong, that's the most restricted that we have. And I think that makes it rough for people like trying to buy affordability. Also on the comment, maybe we don't wanna close everything. We can close, like close the loop all the time. There's no wiggle room. Sometimes there needs to be a little wiggle room. So I think sometimes not closing it leaves discussion, leaves like, hey, well, what about this? Because you're never going to be able to think about like, you know, well, if Mandy wanted to do this, or Todd wanted to do this, or Mike wanted to do this, like you can't foresee what's coming down the pike. And I just feel like sometimes you need to leave things with a little bit of wiggle room so that we can decide as a town or Select Board or whatever, whatever, come together and... I think they're very, right now, it's this equals this equals this equals this, but our role isn't cookie cutter.
Thank you, Mandy. Okay, so we've had one for so much as one against, I guess. And I'm gonna address a couple of comments from Mr. Hindinger. I'm gonna go first to, I think what his last comment was, which is proposed as a complete document. At the adoption of the town plan in 2017, the Planning Commission was present and knew we had a lot of work to do to bring the zoning bylaws into compliance with that new town plan. That was another four or five years of work that existed between the petitions to remove zoning and the adoption of the town, that town plan, and then this work to get to the zoning, get through the zoning bylaws. The Planning Commission at that time asked the Select Board for guidance on how they wanted this presented to them. They didn't want any more than four at a time because it's too much to do all at once. We have three or four things, basically four things that we're presenting here with the inclusion of the water district change. And you could see if we had a whole document to do, it would be near impossible to get through a public hearing on all of the changes. I mean, it's just easier and the Select Board said that's how they wanted to do it. So that's what we did. As a Planning Commission, that was a request for us. So that's what we did. So that had actually already been addressed, Todd, back in 2017. Definitions, eliminate, elimination of junkyard. That was eliminated quite a few years ago. And basically, the reason for that is the definition of a junkyard is in state statute or state law. And we don't have much, we haven't really found a way to grapple with, you know, how to tell somebody their yard's a mess and make them clean it up or paint their house. You know, I think there's, there comes a point where you're crossing a line and you're, I think we need to be careful with that. I don't think that's our job, but I, that doesn't mean I don't agree that there's some junkyards around that are quite unsightful and I'd like to see some change there. Now I'll say this, this is great having all of these people here. Where are you with the Planning Commission when we're working on this stuff? This isn't fair, I'm telling you, and it ain't right. It's very disrespectful to the people that put their time in at the Planning Commission to do this. I just, I wanna be very clear that I feel that way about this. We want, I don't, I'm not recognizing you right now, thank you. I have the floor. I, I want to see, I wanna hear what you've got to say. I want to work with you and pull these things together as a town. It's very hard to do when you work in a vacuum over there. People said they didn't hear about these meetings. 14 days before the 16th, at that meeting here, I said, "We've got a hearing coming up." And people come in and say, "I didn't know about it." You know, I was telling everybody as much as I could that there was a hearing coming up. And then people are blaming us that they don't know. It is your job, it is your due diligence to know what's going on and we publish it, we have state requirements that we have to fulfill, and we do that. And we try to do more as much as we can. But it is your job to know what's going on and get to these meetings. Here, meetings at the Planning Commission, hearings at the Planning Commission, meetings here. Standards. Todd, you talked about standards. There are standards, there are lighting standards, there are sign standards, there are parking standards. There's also a set of general standards that cover noise, dust, smoke, electrical draw, and that list goes on. It is in the bylaws. There are standards that are pointed out in the bylaws. So to say that there aren't any standards is inaccurate as well, Todd. Conditional reviews, conditional use review. I'm gonna back up a little bit to where new uses are brought in. Actually, I'm not sure that a lot of new uses were brought in. About the only new uses I'm aware of, Paul, you're on the Planning Commission, you can help me with this as needed, had to do more with, again, state statute, which is duplexes, multi-housing, multi-use type structures. That may be two or three apartments, might be just a duplex, as I said, two families living in one house, separate. It could be an accessory use, as Todd pointed out, a separate building. It could be, for instance, a store on the first floor in an apartment upstairs or a living space upstairs. So some of those things were, they're called out in the state statute and they are new additions to the law of what we can and must provide for. And we had to, we had to address that at the Planning Commission. What we did do that's different on conditional use is we looked at the village area as being a multi-purpose use or a multi-use district, which it is. You have, and again, the state statute addresses that. It talks about your density, moving to your village, that's where you want it, so that it's not scattered all over the hillside. I don't wanna see that either. So you have your density and the town plan calls for that, to focus that into the villages. That becomes a multi-use. That means that you're gonna have businesses and residential properties together in that area. That's just what it means. And then you move out from that and... And then you move out from that, and also, if you're going to have your density, you want your lots to shrink a little bit. I do have some slides prepared to demonstrate the difference between an acre and a half acre, because there seems to be confusion on what that is. Get into that in just a second. But those multiuses are necessary in the village. That's where, I mean, if you read the state statute, they're starting to talk about sidewalks, people being able to park in one place and walk from business to business to business to business. That's really not what our town is, I get that. And I'm not sure it ever will be, to be honest with you. But, you know, we have to kind of try to work within the guidelines of what the statutes tell us. So traditional uses are residential. But when we had the petitions and the meetings that followed the petitions back in 2010, they were very well attended. There were five meetings. There was probably close to forty people, more than are here tonight, at just about every meeting. And there were, there were five of them that were held. So you're talking about two hundred and some odd people that came in. And one of the first things they were saying was, "We don't want to have to jump through hoops to do everything on our property." One of those things that was understandable was, I think, small structure was like, if I remember right, was either four or six square feet, which meant you needed a permit for a doghouse. Okay? Literally. Maybe that's what we wanted? That wasn't what the people were saying at the time. They didn't, that wasn't what they wanted. So, Todd, you brought up the home occupation as a principal use. Basically, that's a non-permitted use. Not a non-permitted use, it's a non-permit use. It does not require a permit for the home occupation.
I said home business.
Well-
Which, so you're right. I was talking about home business, so go ahead.
Yeah, there's, there's actually three specific business bylaws, and they've already been adopted, all three of those. But that first level, which is, doesn't require a permit, that actually came out from DeForest during the town meeting when we were dealing with the petitions. And she said on the town floor that, you know, there are people that are working on their computers at home. How are you ever even going to know it? So why, why would we be trying to regulate something like that? And that was a very valid point. I have to agree with her. And so we looked at that, and we said, okay, well, you know, so, okay, maybe an attorney, you know, you can hang a little shingle on your door, and, and that's it. You know, you don't, obviously, no deliveries. You know, you might have somebody coming in and out once here and there, but, but that became a permitted use with, and it's just, tell somebody about it. Make sure you're in compliance with that language. Or, or you move into the next language, which is home business one. And that's still a permitted use, but it restricts the size. Where it can be, you know, it has to be, that is an accessory use.
It's listed as a principal use, and that's all I was saying, was that the thing wasn't arranged properly. I did not speak any opposition to any of those-
Okay. All right, I apologize for putting words in your mouth on that. The, that is intended as an accessory use. I would agree with that. I think that's housekeeping, basically, because it is a, that is something that has been adopted already. It is on the books. So that's, that's a minor housekeeping issue. So- So with that, I'm going to go back to the floor. Who wants to go next? Mr. Fuller?
I'd just like to say that I'm going to remain quiet tonight for a different reason. I have to attend a service, a funeral tomorrow for my mom. And I thought it was my job to serve the town tonight, to listen. So I'm going to stay pretty quiet, but I came to listen to what people had to say.
So sorry to hear that, Dave. Next? Yes, sir?
My name's Pete Martin. I work at Twin Line up here. And I was at the last planning commission, I believe it was, and they were talking about the new map and all this stuff. And, you know, these folks were there, and they were talking about their dream of being able to build a house. And I'm sure there's a lot of people in this room tonight that came here to Weathersfield, that dream of a nice, quiet country living and having their dream come true. And what I saw with the planning commission was a lot of positive stuff coming out of it. And, you know, I understand the people who do own already and want to keep their property pristine and nice, and I think that can happen even with the changes that are, you know, people are looking at doing now. You know, so I'm in favor for it. You know, and like I say, I work in this town, at Twin Line, and there's things there that we could probably expand on, too. We've talked with, I think it's Ryan. We've talked to him, what, you know, would be nice to be able to do, too, there. And, you know, I think we've been a good steward for the town. We've cleaned the place up. It looks sharp, it looks good, and it's a viable business. It's needed, and that's what we want to do, is move forward, too, with that property, to be able to expand on, you know, maybe putting some housing in upstairs that would help solve that problem. You know, it's property that isn't being used right now, you know, as far as the buildings there, but it's not being used.
Could you say what Twin Line is, what, where?
The old CBPS building up here on 131.
Right. A mechanic's business now.
Auto repair and all that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all I have. I just, I just think it's, you know, these folks' dreams shouldn't be bundled because of some, you know, little glitch somewhere.
That was one in favor, I guess, so now the next is, I'm saying opposed, it doesn't mean somebody's opposed, but anybody has questions, I guess? Willis, speak your name, please.
Willis Wood. I happen to be an alternate on the select board also. If the select board approves this and some of the things Todd mentioned, like, like housekeeping things, like, like it does not this site plan review necessary, how much, how much is it locked in, and how much can, can you call that housekeeping and put that in if it ought to be there? And how much have you locked in that there is no site plan when you really meant that there should be? See what I'm saying?
I do, exactly what you're saying. First of all, the things that were actually moved out of conditional use, site plan review, were done very thoughtfully over very, very lengthy discussions. Paul, two months, three months, or more? Six months that we spent debating that. Howard? Yes?
I don't call, who is it?
It was a very long discussion about what to take, what should or shouldn't, and where. Because it's not in all places that that was, that was taken away. It was just, I think most, most of those types of changes happened with the village, the villages. Not everywhere else. Todd, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of that-
I'm going to go with that being the most distinct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, so the housekeeping has to get done, because we do have to publish a document that is correct and have that ready for our zoning board members, like yourself. But if there's a problem, say we, we see pretty quickly something getting out of hand that we don't want. There is in the statute a thing called interim zoning bylaws, which is a stopgap that was created by the legislature that the planning commission and select board probably could, within a week or two at the most, have an interim zoning bylaw change that would stop it. It's not just going to run away. It won't. That won't happen.
Another kind of question I have is, well, a concern that kind of comes up is that we list a lot of permitted or conditional or whatever things, and under conditional things we list, what, like, a site plan might be required. And, and the elephant that sometimes arises in the zoning board is the things we don't list, and how do we fit that in? I can't think of a specific example, but, you know, we happen to list gas stations, we happen to not list, let's say, electrical car recharge stations. And so we have to figure out how to fit that into the existing documents. I don't quite see an answer to that, and I don't mean that these changes are going to affect that one way or the other.
Well, actually, this one I get to throw right in your lap. Because I think what the zoning bylaws actually say is that, the statement is, "Any other purpose deemed similar or appropriate by the zoning board."
Yeah.
So, yeah, it does. But what we're trying to focus on is getting away from the list. Like, you can do this, 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 and this. Let me say it a different way. You can have a motorcycle shop, you can have a repair shop, you can have a small enterprise, you can have a doctor's office, a dental office, a bank. You know, when you create a list, what tends to happen is people sometimes look at that list and say, "Well, it's not in the list, you can't do it."
Yes.
And, and they, maybe, and I'm not making any assertions here, but maybe this person doesn't like what somebody's proposing, even though it might have some similarity to something else that's in that list, and they're not willing to, "Well, it's not in the list, can't do it." We're trying to get over-
That's the problem that I'm kind of trying to address.
And so are we, but by creating the standards that I had mentioned before, we're not done with that, but that's the kind of zoning we're looking to create at the planning commission, which is a standard, so that you can say, okay, you can do this if this, this, this lines up. You can do this if this, this, and this lines up. If they don't, then you can't. Similar to a conditional use review. And another point I want to make is, I think, in reading Todd's document, I don't know if everybody has had an opportunity to read what he wrote, but there was something else he alluded to in there, and that was that without the conditional use, there's no site review, there's no way, you know, somebody can just come in and get a permit and go do what they want. There's two reasons they can't. Number one, when you get a permit, even if it's a permitted use that Todd talked about for a house, a residential use, that we, we know, you go in, you see the land use administrator, and you get a permit. He signs off, there's six of them hanging up upstairs right now, out on the bulletin board, that are administrative decisions, and he signed them. The first thing is that gets posted for fifteen days. No development starts for fifteen days. My review of state statute is, during that, when that thing gets signed, that day, every abutter and/or adjoining property, which means if you live across the street, the highway doesn't stop you from being a abutter, whether it's a highway or a private road or whatever, you're still considered an abutter, and you receive notice of that development, that permit. That's statute, that's the law. We have to do that. So, okay, he issues a permit, and one of the abutters doesn't like the idea. Something's going on over there I don't think I like. They come in and file an appeal on that decision. Goes to the zoning board for review. That's the process. And that's on every permit, no matter what it is, that happens. That's state law. It's required. So again, there's, there's a lot of levels that are in place that continue to protect people's rights and people's due process. And let's say the zoning board agrees with the decision of the zoning administrator. They still can file an appeal after that to the E Court. And during that whole time, guess what? Person that's been given an okay, starting there, an okay from you, and I apologize for pointing, still cannot do anything until that process is completed through the E Court. And there, I mean, look at Jackson Gore. How long was that held up? I'm just saying, what was it, twelve years, fourteen years, that Jackson Gore was held up? And, and out of that, a lot of changes were made to the Act 250 process.
Let's not get into-
Yeah, I, yes, I agree. I'm starting to chase a rabbit here, but, and thank you for that. But it's really important to note that-
There are methods of appeal, I-
Starts right out of the gate.
Yeah.
Anything.
Yeah.
Whether it's allowed or not. Somebody can still challenge it. Okay?
Hi, Susan Hindinger.
Yep.
I would like to respond to what you just said, and, and yes, like, neighbor taking neighbor to court is one way that our town could operate around developments that people disagree with or is proceeding in a way that people don't support or something. But to me, the zoning bylaws and the zoning review and site plan review and conditional use review is a way of preventing that by making sure that people have planned thoughtfully and are fully aware of the best practice for, you know, like, controlling runoff or planning your traffic access properly, or arranging lighting so that it doesn't pollute the neighborhood, or whatever it is, putting up signs that are not going to, you know, prevent somebody from seeing getting out of their driveway. Like, one way we could do it is just say, like, everything's allowed, and if your neighbors disagree, they can take you to court. That's legal. But that's not a very friendly town to live in.
I do, I, I-
Let me finish, please. I would just rather have, I'm in support of, like, site review for most, for most development. Not a doghouse, not a, you know, little tiny thing in your house, but a change in the use of your property. It seems like a kind of a fairly simple process to go through. We're not talking about major permit fees or long, like, long delays or whatever. And it's just a way of kind of avoiding problems, to me. I don't think it's a way, I think it's much better than the idea of just, like, letting everything happen and saying, like, okay, just take your neighbors to court. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, that is not what I said.
Well, I was just responding to whatever.
I understand, but I want to be clear that that is not what I said. And, and you mentioned lighting and all of those things. There are standards for those things.
Yes, people, people learn about those when they go through the site review process, right?
No, no. Those are, those are standards that are in place regardless of whether there's a site review or not. The administrative officer can review those things as well. We pay him for that. So they are included. They're, it's not just do whatever you want and then take your neighbor to court. No, we don't want to do that. We don't want to go to court. In fact, I'll, I'll, who wants to go next?
I'm withdrawing.
You're withdrawing?
Yeah, like you said, I shouldn't have been on the plan, and we should have been, there was no way. And I don't know what's going on.
Any other comments?
Sure.
From anybody?
Yeah. I was here at the last meeting-
Name?
Mary, Phil Branson. And this is kind of a follow-up. I had asked at the last meeting about our town plan having a section in regard to scenic resources and views. So I've done some research, and tried to be a better participant. And so, looking at our town plan from 2017, there's a pretty significant section about natural scenic and historic resources in here. And the important scenic resources include views of Mount Scutney, the Weathersfield Center meeting house in Memorial Grove, as well as views from Weathersfield Center Road and Skyline Drive. And there's a chapter in the town plan. And these resources are incorporated into the conservation future land use category. Development in these areas should take precautions to minimize undue adverse impacts on these highly valued scenic resources. And that's on page nineteen of the plan. Page seventy, in the 5.3 Significant Scenic Resources, begins with a statement that Weathersfield scenic resources are irreplaceable. Period. Stop. Goes on to explain roads, waterways, and favorite scenic views currently identified. And there's a nice list of these with some footnotes. In some cases, that view could be degraded by poor development in the foreground. Or a footnote that most of this view has been obscured by housing development in the foreground. So obviously, in 2017, the town thought this would really- So obviously, in 2017, the town thought this was really important and should be a focus. And yet, it's not evident in the proposed zoning map that we're looking at today. And I think there's a lot of detail here. We were required by the state to have goals in our plan. And page 78, 79 of the town plan refer to identify, protect, and preserve important natural and historic features of our community landscape, including scenic, significant scenic roads, waterways, and views. And that, in addition, we prioritize public land conservation efforts within biofinders towards 1 to 3 conservation areas. So I just, in my mind, I'm seeing a lack of that in this.
Okay. Um, how do I address that? Let's start with this. Um, I, I was on the Planning Commission, um, working on that town plan. Um, I started on the Planning Commission, I think, in about 2008 or 2009. And I agree with everything you just read, wholeheartedly. And in fact, the Planning Commission right now is, is working on that entire chapter to give it strength in teeth to be used at, with, at the PUC. Because what, it isn't housing, it isn't forest fragmentation that is gonna damage any of that stuff. It isn't any of what you think that map represents is the problem that's headed our way. Trust me. That's a big statement, but, um, that issue, the issue that's coming that, that we really need to, what we're looking to do is, we're looking to put actual, um, uh, numbers down, where these things are, looking this, Brian, can you speak to that real quick, what you're working on? On, on the scenic resources in, uh, in regard to, um, renewable energy resources?
Yeah, so in the town plan, it has a brief list of locations where scenic resources or scenic vistas are, and-
Which she just read.
Right. And so what we've talked about with regional is when, um, things like solar fields and, um, other things come in, um, they look at those, the list of scenic resources, and they need to be very specific. So in our town plan, it just says a point where a vista exists, but it doesn't say what you're looking at, what direction it is, that kind of thing. So we're going to be updating and putting it in a table with, um, the point or the length of road, or whatever it is, um, to be more specific. It'll describe what you're looking at in the view, um, the direction, the, the bearing of where the view ends and starts, um, and we might be expanding on a list of scenic resources in the town plan.
So my follow-up question is, if you're identifying a view for Route 131 towards Mount Scutney, and you allow development in a 3-acre lot-
Let me stop you right there. I, I'm hearing your question, but I have your answer already. You can't regulate renewable energy any differently than you do any other development. So it has to encompass all of it, which is what we're working on. It, it's still a little different. It, it doesn't, the, I think what you're trying to get at is the, the map and, and the change in the conservation district.
And the level of development. That can happen.
Well, okay, and you said the perfect word, it can happen. It also can possibly not. So that's very speculative. And again, as it, as it starts to get to that level, if, or if it starts to get to that level, I don't wanna see that either. I don't. I, I, look, I was born here. I, I, I was raised and grew up on the, on the hills up in, uh, Plymouth on the weekends. We had a camp up there. And there was nothing when I was a child, and then I watched all the condos come in, and I hated it. So I don't, I don't wanna see those things change, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about where we're going. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that's not gonna happen. David?
I wanna, I wanna just add to that. I, 'cause I wanna, I wanna drill this home, that this map was changed, these views that are defined in our town plan were in districts that would minimize development. Town plan says, once it's gone, it's gone. Your point is, once it started, once it started, it's too late. Why would the map specifically change to 3.5 when it was intended for things that need to be preserved per our town?
Jason Rasmusen.
It doesn't align with that.
Where is Jason?
Over here.
I can't see you. Oh, there you are. You tucked yourself in the corner.
I'm on it, yeah.
Okay, so why was it changed to 3 to 5? The question the Planning Commission had for regional planning, and it was Mr. Rissmusen that was in our meeting, was what land should be in a conservation district? And can you show us that? Take it away.
Well, my, I, my answer to your question is, I don't know. You know, we weren't part of that conversation.
Yes, you, yeah, you were, I asked you that at the, at the Planning Commission.
Well, so we created the map that they were looking at. We did so at the Planning Commission's request. Now, this goes back to, like, around 2013, when we were working with the Planning Commission on the town plan. At that point, um, we came up with them, with a draft future land use map, and I think it was altered in 2016, but I don't think that's changed since. And, um, I don't think that was, in my, my impression of that future land use map at that time, it wasn't zoning, it was just looking at, um, future land use categories, um, trying to get at what the, the policy, uh, and goals for the community were. Flash forward, more recently, we were asked to make a few changes to the permission of the future land use map. I'm unsure what we were doing, because that person wasn't fully clear on what we were asked to do. Um, but anyway, at the end, the result, the Planning Commission asked for this map, and that's where it is. But, you know, I don't have any opinion on it at this point in time, I'm purely here to answer questions. But we, Regional Planning Commission did not necessarily suggest the map, or we're not saying they should make this change, or that you shouldn't, but, uh, it is a pretty big change. I'll get back to it.
May I address him?
I've got a question for him first. Didn't I, specifically from the Planning Commission, ask you to show us what land should be in conservation?
I don't remember that conversation, maybe you did it?
I remember it. And, and that's, that's what the, and it was just a question, it wasn't a directive. We didn't give you a directive, we asked you to show us what land should be in conservation.
Again, I don't recall that question, you might very well have asked me that. I don't, I don't know, and I don't know the context of that conversation.
Okay.
And, if I can continue.
Uh huh.
This is not about my thinking 80, 20, 20, 80, any percentage. It's that I'm looking at what the town put together as a master plan.
Uh huh.
And the land use values here for residential would be areas that surround the village centers that are valued as areas for affordable housing, which we all said is a priority, recreation, and walkable residential neighborhoods. Then the rural area would be those areas between the village centers that provide the town its rural character, recreation areas, working landscapes, and forests. When I read what the town wanted, that's when I get concerned that this map isn't doing that.
David, go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm not here to be, what you were asking of, but if you were to make a decision whether a scenic view should be placed in a 3-5 district, would you have done so?
It, it might depend on other standards that are in the document, so I'd say it depends, but, um-
Does it not make sense to leave it where it was, to have concern that view? Whether it be 131 or Golden River or any other road that's upon this thing?
It's context dependent, uh, yes, I'd say that, but maybe, uh, you know, I'd have to look at each specific situation, I guess, to answer that.
I've got a couple of questions for you, David, and Mary. Um, in those scenic views that you're, you're speaking of, what are the elevations? What are the other, um, other, um, conservative layers that exist in those areas? Steep slopes, elevations, um, you might have land that's already in concert, in land trust, that, that can never be subdivided. You might have deeded properties.
Those are mites and maybes, I'm just thinking about-
Well, actually, they're not mites and maybes, they're, no, no, they're actually, they're actually on, on this map. That's what's on this map.
You asked about the elevation of the view.
Elevation, elevations are restricted in, in the zoning bylaws. 1,500 feet.
Not what you see, but where you see it from.
But, 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 well, but they kinda go together. You're protecting a view, and if, where is that view and what, what is the view of? Okay? And also, where are you? You're, you're right, where, where are you as you're looking at?
A low elevation with a lovely view.
Okay, so, so what's gonna change? Where you're standing or what you're looking at? And what is it you don't want to change?
I, I, I've never said that. I'd like to, I'd like to question the land use administrator's definition for view. I think when people are driving past the church up 131, they're not looking up, and they're seeing the tip-top view of Mount Scutney. Views are panoramic. They start, they start with the first thing you see. And if, say, I'm not, I don't wanna mention name, but I have to, say they're, they're rabbits now, they're, they're, they're in district, and they put six houses on there, the first thing people are gonna see is they're gonna see all that. The view is more of a panoramic. And I think we should define what a view, how it needs to be looked at, and some of the perception of the person who's looking at it. And the town plan says, the relevant is part of that definition of view, by development. But yet, we just took all the views we had and put them into a district that now can allow, and I don't like the word "need." And I don't like the word "trust in you that it will never happen," because I'm sorry, I don't trust "you that it won't happen," nor do I trust the people who own that property not to divide it into six houses.
And I don't take that personally, because I'm not gonna be here forever, and that my, my level of trust ends at some point. So, um, but what, what I'm getting at is, if, if you look at, do you have this, this map here?
It's sitting next to me, I haven't read it.
Um, this, this map includes the overlays of primatic soils, deer wintering areas, flood hazard areas, use value appraisal parcels, I believe that's current use, is that correct? Um, Vermont Protected Lands Database, these are land trusts, that's the green, uh, wetlands, significant natural communities, rare threatened and injured species. So if you look, most of the town still ends up in one of these categories where there's gonna be some other impedance or, you know, something in the way of development.
So why would you zone in this 3 to 5 if you can't use it?
It, what, the intent wasn't to, to necessarily zone it 3 to 5. And I would be more than willing to have a conversation about a, perhaps a forest district, as is called for in, in the state statutes. But to put all your land in conservation, and, and that was the purpose for the original question I asked Jason, I, I still, I'm gonna live on this because I, I remember it. What land should be in conservation? That was the question. And, and that was what came back insofar as the change to the conservation district. These are the lands that are fragile, and I remember a part of that conversation, which, where he was identifying for us the types of land that should be in conservation, and those were put in conservation. But then there's all these other things that, that exist along with that. So even though some of these things go to 3 to 5, Mr. Fuller can explain to you about a subdivision across the street from his house, Plains Road. People wanted to subdivide a 10-acre lot. By the time the planning, planning commission got done, it was almost 20 acres still, because of the other limitations that exist within subdivision regulations, land use, state laws, that, just because it says it's 3 to 5. And first of all, just because we put it in a 3 to 5 district, which we didn't really put it in 3 to 5, that just, okay, we did, it's there, it's there, so yes, okay, we put it there. But, but that was, the goal wasn't to put it there, per se, to, just to create 3 to 5 acre zoning. It is, I, I think it's a good thing for the town, I think it, it's gonna work out fine. Can obviously disagree with me, there's a lot of other people that do agree with me. But, um, the, the point is, uh, a lot of these properties are not 3 to 5 acres, and us changing it to a 3 to 5 acre zone doesn't mean they're going to be, either. A lot of these properties are owned and they're, they're conserved already, they have deed restrictions on them, land trusts.
And you know, unfortunately, this couple might be losing hope at what you're saying, that even though it's zone 3 to 5, likely wouldn't happen in a lot of places, but we could be focusing on where can we have residential that fits into the town plan where priority was to develop around the villages and hamlets.
Uh huh.
If you didn't mean it to go there, would you, and just to Rissmusen is it, pardon you if I use your definition, consider taking, by definition, what we have in our town plan as used? And potentially, maybe preserve that for the town plan. If you didn't know what you were, sorry, I didn't mean it this way, but if you didn't know what your intended function was, then would you consider-
It's not our call, you know, we, we just provide technical assistance to the town. So I, I would be more than happy to think more about that if I was asked to.
Mr. Chairman, is, is there a, we did get a note from RPC that said the, and I didn't even know this, all these years I lived in town, um, Weathersfield has 28,500 acres, something like that. No idea. 4,400 acres are permanently conserved. I didn't know that either. Can't build on them. That's not rock. Those are land trusts, and those are easements that have been made by deeds. That's a lot of land that's conserved. I heard on the news last weekend that 24% of Vermont is now permanently conserved. That came out of Patrick Leahy's office. So I don't know, on this map, 'cause this is the first time I've seen it tonight, um, and it's shaded in different colors, I don't know where the roads line up to what the Bransons are saying, so I agree, up on the center, for instance, would that be conserved? The last information I had, there were land trusts up that road, but it would be good to see the road network here, according to this map that is, that's color schemed here. I don't know that.
Is the purpose of redoing these scenic vistas to create language in the bylaw that makes them a protected vista? I don't think that there's language in the bylaws that address it, other than identifying it in the town plan.
Well, the, the, the purpose of our discussion, um, at the Planning Commission Ryan, is, is the language to strengthen the town plan for use in the PUC to, to allow us some leverage against where renewable energy, uh, sites can be created, because I, I, I mean, if you don't wanna look at a house, do you wanna look at rows and rows of panels of, of solar across those mountains? Mr. Branson?
Uh, doesn't our town plan help us?
No.
Doesn't?
No, it doesn't, that's why we're working on it, it's nuts. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, there's no other way to put it, it's not good. It, it doesn't. It, it's, that's why we're working on it.
It's on your radar, so you're working on it.
Oh, really? It's, it is, it is on the radar. And then you go into the statute, and you find that you can't restrict the development of, um, renewable energy sites any more than that of any other development. So it all has to be tied together and consistent. That's to answer your question. Paul?
There's a lady behind you that looks like that.
Sorry. You see back there?
Yeah, my name's Julie Levy.
Yeah?
I was once on the Planning Commission and have participated in several rewrites of the town plan, which were very inclusive processes, I'm about to say, but that was a while ago. And I feel a little hesitant to speak because you started out by chaining everybody- And I feel a little hesitant to speak because you started out by chaining everybody in the room who came to this meeting, even though some of us have been looking for this map, which is not this map. It's the map that you just recently put up on the website that has all the changes of the zoning so that we could participate in the meeting, now I've seen it today. So, here's what I'd like to think about. Mr. Branson, who seems to have helped create that map, but without the designated purpose of having it be a zoning map, said in 2013 there were goals that were expressed to his regional planning office to create that map. I'd like to know where those goals came from and what they are. To see if they still align with goals of people who would like to do things in town and goals of people who would like to keep some of the character of the town. I think those two things are quite compatible. But I don't think that doing a blanket change of zoning from 10 acres to three to five acres is really the approach. I agree that we can look at it in a little more fine-tuning sort of manner. I did see in the map, though I'm not that familiar with it because I just looked at it today, increases in commercial and industrial areas, which Weathersfield has been needing for a long time because that improves our tax base. At least according to research, cutting things in smaller pieces for a lot of residential places raises taxes. So people should be aware of that as the planning process proceeds. I think we need to look in much more detail at this. I'd like to see those goals set by a wider referendum, a survey or what have you to find out what do people in Weathersfield want now? I don't know because I've been in Weathersfield a long time and I've got that old mentality. But I'd like to know what new businesses, what's happening now. I do know that when I worked on the agricultural section of the plan in the 70s and 80s, big dairy was a thrust of the state. And I personally talked about small farming. People having sustainable farms, selling their extra products. And people laughed at me and looked at me like I was throwing an antenna. Now, everybody's doing that. A lot of people are doing that. We want parcels of a size where they can do something like that. Five acres isn't enough. Three acres isn't enough. And the price of those parcels is going to go up. As soon as they're cut up, that five-acre parcel will have automatically the value of what used to be a 10-acre parcel. So people are going to be struggling even more to do what they dream of. I think we need a bigger discussion on what the goals are of the town. Where are those things taken in? What needs to be perfected? But taking this map that was not intended to be a zoning map and blindly putting zoning sectors on it, I think is the wrong thing. Also conservation, you talk about conservation easements as if they prohibit any development. A conservation easement is tuned to what the owner's vision for that land is. And it might be a house lot here, a house lot there. It might be forested land and farmland. To say blankly, "Our land is tied up in conservation," I think gives people a false impression, as does this map. Why don't you have the map of your current zoning plan available to us on paper instead of this one?
It is available to you. Current zoning map?
A printed out map. Why is this one here and why isn't this one?
Because this is the one that we're holding the hearing.
I would agree that this looks pretty different. We're in a garland. This looks pretty different than the map we found on the town website this morning, which shows the currently 10-acre zoning, which would be three to five. Correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like that's most of the town. And it would severely impact what our town is like if that change were to happen. That could be more than double the number of households, which I'm not saying would be good or bad, but it would be very different. So I'm kind of intrigued by the idea of a survey because not everyone is available to come to every meeting. And in fact, that would be cumbersome to have the whole town come to every meeting, right? I wonder if there could be a survey or a way for people to participate and you can take the temperature of the town on who likes tonight the zoning, who would be excited about a switching? Because it did seem like a very, is that correct? That would be a huge, like the majority of the town would be switching from 10 acres to three to five?
I don't see the change to three to five. First of all, I want to reiterate that most of those lots are not three to five now. They have to go through a subdivision in order to be three to five. Just because we made the zone that a piece of property is in three to five doesn't mean that that property automatically becomes...
But it could be.
It could be. That's right.
Most likely like it would be, right?
No, I wouldn't say most likely, no. I would say most likely not. I would go actually the opposite way because of all of the other things that get in the way when you do a subdivision. I've done a fair amount of subdivisions. And I know what I'm talking about when I say that, you know, you come in and you want to do a three to five, next thing you know, you can't. Because if you do this three to five here, it's either all ag or it's all steep slopes or it's all above 500 feet or it's in any one of these other categories, ags, wetlands, et cetera. I've seen a five-acre lot that barely had enough room for a house. It was an existing lot in a three to five zone. It barely had enough room for a house after we went through everything. So that happens. And I think more, to your point, more of these lots, these big lots, are not going to be subdivided. And probably even more of them, people are not going to want to subdivide them, even though that's there. And that's fine. We can get to that with a forest, a forest zone or something where we say, okay, this, this, and this, we want these to stay large forest blocks.
I guess what I'm curious is, like, could there be more collaborative townwide visioning rather than see what happens?
Well, let me answer that.
That's a whole conjecture whether I do it or whether you do it. It's conjecture whether someone will want to subdivide now or later.
Let me answer that this way. The petitions of 2010 brought everybody out in force. I was told by the town manager, "You divided this town." And I said, "Good. People are paying attention." And they did. They all came out. And we listened, the planning commission listened. There's, you know, right now there's five people on the planning commission. There's probably, what, 20 people, 18, 20 people that have worked on this, all of this stuff, the town plan, which that town plan adopted in 2017 came from that and the meetings with the people about what they wanted to do and how they wanted their land to be used. So that balance that was promised by the administration at the time, which was, "Don't throw out zoning. We'll go back, we'll fix it, and we'll achieve balance." That's what we've been trying to do and achieve that balance. And there are people that are all the way over here and people that are all the way over here. Some want to see more change, some don't want to see any at all. We can't, we've got to be somewhere in the middle of that. And that's where we feel we are with this change.
So maybe something like a survey could be useful to you? I mean, 2017...
A survey of what? The people's opinions?
All of the residents of Weathersfield, yes.
We did that.
Well, I was a kid in school when that happened. It's a new year.
Okay.
Our neighbors wanted to come and they have a little one. They just keep wreak havoc in the meetings, so we couldn't come.
Excuse me for a moment, but if we did that, then we'd have to rewrite the town plan and start all over, which is what we did all the time anyway.
There you go.
I just wanted to say, it seems to me like the word conservation is being used with two different meanings in the conversation. Like, the Conservation District is a 10-acre zone. It doesn't mean that the land is locked up against development. All kinds of things can happen on 10 acres. And some things are allowed and some things are permitted and some things are conditional, like all the other Conservation Districts. So we're not talking about, I don't think we're debating here about whether the Conservation District should be permanently conserved land that you can't do anything on. We're just talking about whether the vast majority of the town that's currently zoned for 10-acre lots should be changed to be 3-acre lots. And so when we talk about things being locked down as permanently conserved, that's confusing issue, I think, because we're not talking about permanent conservation. We're talking about 10-acre zoning in the Conservation Districts. Just want to offer that clarification.
Paul?
I just wanted to remind the chair, you didn't already know, but it's eight o'clock and we still have a full slate of other business tonight. So I'm not sure how you might want to handle that, if you wanted to continue with the hearing tonight and push anything off or if you wanted to, but what you wanted to do. Just we have a lot of other things to go through.
Any questions?
I actually would like to just say something.
Yes?
I know that everybody is really concerned about what would happen to our town. And I don't know how many people here have actually tried to subdivide their land because you can go beyond what the town, you know, we can go by what the town does and what they set up for bylaws. But if you ever then had to step into what the state demands for a subdivision, you get shut down by law. And the reason why I say this, it's not just even the state, even within your own town, if you decide to put a subdivision in, and I can say this from experience, that just because you want to do it, doesn't mean you can. You can have all the engineering and put all the money into it and then go before your town and they say, "We decide in one meeting that we don't want this in our town, so we're going to take your 1-acre lots and make them into, I mean, your half-acre lots and we're going to make them into 1-acre lots." You could, and I'm speaking of this from actual personal experience. And what it changed was a place right in the village because concern of impact on school and the concern of what might, you know, maybe that might mean a mobile home goes in there versus a house. Everybody had a right to go there and make that decision. You have a development in the middle of town on Riley Drive. If you try to do something with your 10-acre, anything under 10 acres outside of the village, the state gets involved as far as your septic systems and you're involved with a lot of them. You know, you're then put into a place where the state can step in and make decisions environmentally whether you can do something. So we do have protection even beyond what we do here in the town. And I just think that everybody should kind of know that, that there is, outside of what we make for a decision here, that, you know, all the decisions aren't made just by the town. That our state has done a lot to protect, maybe you could say good or bad decisions. It doesn't really matter. It's just simply the fact that, you know, there's land that even if you wanted to do it and you had to go through all the work to figure out about septic systems and get engineers and all that kind of stuff. It is not an easy process. And maybe that matters to some people, but for people that might be really, really concerned, it does prevent a law.
Paul? Anything? David?
The only thing I'd add would be, in 1995, well, RPC, I did see that email that Jason put out that he did not think, and I know we're getting into a little bit of a debate between what the chair and RPC said, but I saw this email that said that RPC thought that about 60% of the town was C-10, not 80. So if we're going to start getting in debate about numbers, we need to get the numbers right. They need to be correct. In 1995, that's when the 60% or so of the land went to C-10 or C-10 was born, so to speak, from three to five. It'd be interesting to find out how that affected the town as far as how many new houses showed up. I know there are 1,650 parcels today in town. Some, not too many don't have buildings. I do know that. On a procedural matter, this is a legal continuation of a hearing. So you need to explain what happens tonight, whether it's continued, to listen to whatever is going on, to take up, whether it stops with no action or whether it stops with action. So that's my comment. I don't, so there's a matter of you taking up whatever, where this ends, continues, or whatever. My guess is this planning board, so for everybody, I don't know whether everybody's been involved. The planning board has taken up this since 2017. They've gone through two meetings a month for five years. 120 meetings to take up all this section by section. And I've participated in three or four of the hearings, listening to things. The planning board's made up of five people that do not agree. I listen to each one of them and they go back and forth. So this isn't like this hasn't, they try to envision exactly what could come up in a particular bunch of comments. And they don't adopt something out of one meeting. It usually takes two or three meetings or more. So this has taken a long time to get to this place. And I know that we have adopted a few of these bylaws along the way, here at this table. I do think that some of this conserved land, 4,400 acres, is protecting certain sections of town that are important for a variety of reasons. But I don't know how you want to handle the hearing, the status of the...
All right, first thing I'm going to do is, anybody who hasn't spoken to this topic to this point, any comments? You spoke last meeting.
Steve Aikenhead, just my sympathies with Marina and Julie's desire for some involvement. Like you said, I'm too late, but there it is. Wishing I could be involved in a little survey maybe from my ear, whatever, I don't know. It's tough. Thanks for all you're doing.
Going to be brief.
It is. If you don't get buy-in from a majority of the people in this town on something that's been, the town is in trouble. The government of this town is in trouble. So my thought is, let's slow down and do this right, even if we've already spent a couple of years, watch another couple of months and do it what Marina and Julie suggest. What's the rush to stretch this out and maybe as far as out to, you know, be ready with a presentation to a town meeting?
What's... Probably wouldn't like my answer. I'm being honest. You know, say, "What's the rush?" I've been working on this for over eight years. Julie calls it shaming. So be it. I guess in some cases it should be. If people are that passionate about this stuff, come to the meetings.
That part's done. So water over the dam, Mike.
Okay. And I don't see it as a rush. Been eight years of not a rush.
I'm Rika Henderson.
Yeah?
By the same token, the map was only published, you know, and available to people to look at on the website today. So yes, it's been an ongoing process.
Technically, that's not true. Because that map was the future land use map adopted in the town plan in 2017. It's been available in the town plan since 2017.
Has it been up on the town website?
It doesn't have to be. By law, it doesn't have to be. It has to be available to the public in a place, in a public place within the town. It's been in the town plan since 2017.
Joan Plumb, just to clarify, I have looked through the town plan on the website and the map is not in the plan. It may be available also, but it's not.
It isn't, Brett.
Just a question as to why it was done. What was the purpose of changing it from, and I don't know the terminology, one, built one home, being able to build on 10 acres as opposed to one in three to five? What was the purpose for the change?
Well, okay. The purpose of the change was to put land in conservation that belonged in conservation. The purpose of the change was to put land in conservation that belonged in conservation. And yes, I'm talking about conservation. And that land was identified through regional planning, even Mr. Ray's Houston doesn't seem to recall the conversation, that was the question. I posed the question, because that's what I wanted to know, what land should be in conservation? And that's somewhat clear, as to, you know, fragile and endangered, et cetera. And that's what was put in. Well, what's the next step down from that? At this point, it's 3 to 5. And so everything that was, so if you took the outline of the C-10, and you put just what belongs in conservation in conservation, all of that other outline became 3 to 5, the next step down. That's it. It was, that's all. That's, that was it.
Why couldn't it be 3 to 5?
Because we're, because, because the point was to protect land that is supposed to be protected and not tie up land that's not supposed to be protected, not with conservation. As I said earlier, I would be happy to entertain another district.
Yeah, I think I got it.
Well, great. Are you done, Ginger?
I have to hear what he said. How did you say, "Tie up"? Can I look through your thoughts?
1994, when this went through, C-10 included not only the physical definition of conservation, which can't be built on, physically can't, or has some reason why it has to be. I think C-10 in 1994 also included what we wanted. So it's bigger than what you call C-10 today. And now that you've used it again to a physical definition, you left the wants out of code.
I'm trying to see that. Who else? What about you? Thank you.
I think that's why, I think what Ken just said is why it would be handy to survey the town, or take it to, you know, survey the town, or take it to town meeting or something, because that's Ken was saying, in 1994, people seemed to want C-10, and I don't know what they want now.
I would actually disagree with that, and I'll tell you why. Mr. Fuller can comment on this maybe, too. There were a lot of people that were very, very surprised when they woke up one day and it was 10 acres, and it had never been. And that, and that decision was also made right here, that was not moving on at a town meeting. Anybody else? You, anybody else that hasn't spoken?
I have spoken.
You have?
But I haven't finished.
Well, but I am.
I want to make sure that's noted.
Rika Henderson again. Am I correct in thinking that the select party has the authorization to make this a public question at the next election, rather than making a decision tonight, rather than ratifying things tonight?
That is correct.
So I have the opinion that a public question is warranted. I think it's a big issue.
Thank you.
There are too many people that have...
Can she make a motion?
No, she cannot.
I just have a couple thoughts. One is, the effort that's been spent working on the bylaws and the definitions and such, what I would suggest for tonight is that if there's going to be any action taken, consider separating the map, which seems to be something which we've learned, may not have had all the thought put into it that we were led to believe, and that maybe needs to be done. The map may be something that needs improvement, whereas even I, with the criticisms that I've made to try and be helpful for the zoning bylaws, and recognizing all the work that you've done, I would suggest that you detach those two line items, because they're so distinctly different. You sure haven't spent 120 meetings working on this map. And so, so you might consider splitting those two things, so that we can improve the map and maybe make some progress on other issues.
I, I see all of the documents as living documents that are constantly under review and constantly changing. That's our job. That's what we're here to do at the Planning Commission. Any other comments?
I got just one comment.
I'm going to wrap this up in about five minutes, so...
One thing I think everybody can agree on is, sometimes things take a while to get done, and especially when it comes to government. And usually, we're all pissed because of government taking so long on things. So this has been going on since 2017, maybe, maybe it's time to make the decision, one way or the other.
Last comment.
I know I spoke, but I spoke with the resident, now I'm speaking as members of zoning bylaws. I support Mr. Todd's comment.
Mr. Todd?
Todd Hinder.
Certainly not your comment, that's Todd over there.
That's Mr. Henderson.
I agree with that. Take, take the bylaws, separate them so the board can get back to work, discuss the map. Separate the show. I don't think anybody here has commented on the bylaws, they're all commenting on the map. Off the bylaws.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close the hearing. This hearing is closed. Will you take no more comment? What time is it?
8:13.
Do I hear a motion from the board on the direction you want to go? Your options are, at this point, to, a motion to approve the bylaws as presented by the Planning Commission, a motion to move forward with no, to, the hearing is closed, take no action, a motion to separate, trying to decide if that, if we can actually do that. We can't do that, can we? We can't. No, we can't actually do that. So those are the only two choices. Either, either we have a motion on the floor to adopt the bylaws as presented from the Planning Commission, or to send it all back to the Planning Commission with no action.
Paul? You do have a third, if I may.
Okay.
I feel that you can also leave it as it is in this whole thing, the way it is. Go to the vote for the town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. The third option is, does, you know, a motion to...
That being said, I don't think you can change anything.
You can't separate it. So, so yeah, you're right. The third option is, is to send it all to town vote by Australia ballot.
Just, but it has to go the way it is. We can't go massage it, we can't go add, you know, any, anything in and change. In the meantime, before that, it would be, what's here?
It's exactly what's right here would go before the voters.
Right.
So, do I hear a motion from anyone here? Anyone on the select board?
I'm going to officially say that, as the chair of the Planning Commission, I'm not going to make a motion on this. Because I don't feel that that's proper.
Kelly?
I'm going to say no action at this time. There's just so much confusion with the public that I don't think, I don't think it's ready to go.
Wendy?
I'm a little torn between...
Mr. Fuller?
I would have preferred you had a different choice of options, because we had one, but then you closed the hearing, because I think if I was chairman, I would have said one of the options would be to continue the hearing, to sort out some of these questions, which I, which I listened to. The hearings, you know, they cost money to put in the paper, they're legally worn things.
They, they do, and I appreciate that thought, and I'll explain why.
Why?
As was pointed out, that I admonished everybody for not coming to the meetings before, I would be more than welcome to go back to the Planning Commission, and some people better show up with some ideas. That's all I've got to say, because if it comes forward again, I'll make the motion myself.
But the process then, there becomes, you know, like 45 days, there's the law to follow before it comes back to this table.
There's a lot to talk about.
Happened a year ago when I was the chair, we had it, and then it got kind of like, not as many people showed up. I don't know the answer, I don't have all the answers.
Could make a motion?
To.
Approve the bylaws.
Yeah, I can't do that with the, with the way that I think the questions need to be sorted out with where my brain is right now, as I spoke earlier.
So we go back to the Planning Commission with it. Hearing is closed. We take no action, it goes back to the Planning Commission. That's, that's basically where we end up.
I want the public to know this, though. Some of these bylaws have been passed.
Mm-hmm.
And, and maybe the map hasn't been corrected, but that doesn't mean that the, that a bylaw all of a sudden changed, moved around somewhere within a zoning district that you might not be aware of. You guys need to read the documents, too, as I do, because I don't know everything, I just don't. So...
Just have one quick question from the zoning administrator.
Can I ask a question?
No. Paul?
It's not here.
No, I, I know, but I still run the meeting. Paul?
Quick question for the zoning administrator. If this, this, these sections don't get, or are not passed or anything tonight, you have, you have a copy, and you know what's legal and what's not in the office right now, if this, if this, nothing here passes, you have a working copy that you know is right, and that you can publish and put out of everything that's already passed from, you know, years ago, and everything, so that people can have a working copy, and the ZBA can have a working copy?
Yes, so I have a copy that's all the bylaws that are currently adopted, nothing more, nothing less. It's not formatted properly, there's references to sections of the old plan, so there's a lot of formatting that needs to be done to it, but I have a copy with everything that's been approved, or I've confirmed has been adopted, and nothing else, I guess.
Right.
But it wouldn't be ready to be published and put up on the website immediately?
No, not, not immediately. All, all I'd like to say is that when, depending on how things go tonight, regardless whether this goes through, or we don't, or we're not, I want to somehow make sure that the ZBA gets a copy of everything that is legal. I don't want anybody to be able to come back here and say that we don't know, we don't have this, we don't whatever. I don't know, even if we pay money for certified mail, so somebody signed for it, saying, "I received it." Not that I didn't get the email, not that I couldn't see it on the webpage, none of that. So I want them to be able to have it, and then we need to have, make sure we have copies here for people, and we need to make sure that it is on the website. I've said that before here, I think we've all said that, I don't know how to make that happen anymore, I can't, I personally, I mean, I have a regular job, I have a regular family, I can't, I can't, I can't do all that, all the time. So that needs to happen, regardless of what happens tonight.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the bylaws as presented by the Planning Commission. That motion needs a second, and the direction that you want these to go in will depend on the vote on that motion. So I make the motion to approve the bylaws as presented by the Planning Commission. Do I hear a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if no action is taken tonight, it has to go back to the Planning Commission? It cannot be...
I'm, I'm going to try to stay within the parameter of the motion, which is, the motion is to approve the bylaws as presented by the Planning Commission. That's, Robert's Rules of Order requires a motion to be in the positive. If you want to send it back to the Planning Commission, basically, you vote no on the motion.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that.
But to get to the vote, we have to have the second. So, that's the way it works. And, and hey...
Discussion, to get to discussion.
We get discussion, we get further discussion. Oh, yes, 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 you always have a discussion.
Second, second the motion for discussion. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I'll second the motion.
Okay. So now we're in discussion on the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the bylaws as presented?
Does that include the map, Mr. Todd?
It includes everything that's been presented to us by the Planning Commission. If, if you want it to go back to the Planning Commission, you're not comfortable with these, you should vote no. If you want these to be adopted, you should vote yes. Any further discussion? Wendy?
Can it be tabled?
I closed the hearing, so no.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, procedurally, no.
I just wanted to know, I mean, like, when we have discussions, sometimes we, as a group, don't have everything that we actually need in order to make that vote, is what I'm saying.
Motion to table supersedes the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, so we can table the motion to vote?
Yes.
And...
All you've got to do is say, "Move to table".
Select board members receive more information that we personally need to make our vote.
Yes.
We can't vote tonight.
So are, okay, so as a procedural, are you making a motion to table?
Yes.
Doesn't need a second, either. Supersedes. You got to, you got to take, you got to take a vote on the motion to table.
Okay, so now we're in, taking a motion on a vote to table. This would bring this decision, not the hearing, back to the table.
With more information that...
The board would basically, it wouldn't open a discussion on the bylaws, it would only open a discussion on the vote to approve the bylaws.
Does the public understand that? Is everybody catching up in Robert's rules?
Everybody up to speed?
So you all will get together again without us?
That's, well...
No, 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 no. Has to be an open meeting. No, we have to have that discussion right here. And we can't discuss it behind your back at all.
Why am I asking?
I don't know. That's a good question. It's a good point. Thank you.
In the discussion, I'm just curious, Wendy, if, since you made the motion to table, what information do you need more to make a decision?
There are, there are some things that have been written that were sent in, and there were some things that were brought up tonight that I just feel like we should have, I, I don't know.
I'm just asking.
It is a point consistent with one you've made a lot, where, I know this isn't the first time this has hit our table, but there's been a lot of times where stuff hits our table, and it's like, can we just take a, some time to get some information here?
Right. And what I'm saying is, there's information that I haven't received, there were some things that were sent in that were not read, and I was willing to look at that, and I'd also like to...
Okay. So...
I have a really, Ray Stapleton, I just have a really odd question. If you vote to table, and you want to get more information, how do you get more information without a hearing?
Dissemination, dissemination of information is only what we have now, that can be reviewed.
Okay, thanks.
Okay? So we have a motion on the floor to table, there's no discussion, which we already had. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Abstain. The motion to table carries, so there is no decision. The hearing is closed.
8:25.
The board, board members will receive all the information. I need copies of all of the, the town plan, the zoning bylaws distributed, all members, copy of the minutes of the meeting, both meetings, the hearing, both hearings, everything, everything that we have to every board member, select board member.
And the letters that...
And, and that includes, yeah, I entered those into, into evidence anyway, so those are part of those documents. So everybody on the board will get that stuff, and get yourself up to speed, and I guess that means that a decision on this will now be, it's been tabled, I think if you table, you have to do time and date specific on the table, don't you, Dave?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Brandon?
20th, isn't it?
The 20th.
What do you?
The next meeting.
What, Brandon?
What was that?
When's the next meeting?
I just answered it, I'm sorry, the 20th.
The 20th, it's the next...
Yeah, yeah. Time, any idea of time when you want to see that on the agenda for the next meeting?
The public hearing?
The hearing's closed.
Public hearing's closed.
Well, when you table something, it has to be the first item on the agenda, doesn't it?
I believe so.
Yep.
Just making sure.
Yep. First item on the agenda. First item on the agenda.
Okay, so it'll be the first item on the agenda. Uh, that means after opening, agenda review, uh, pledge of allegiance, comments from citizens. Correct?
Correct.
So it's actually the fifth item on the agenda.
Well.
But first business item on the agenda, just so everybody is clear. So no action is taken tonight on the hearing. Again, the hearing is closed, a decision will be made at the next meeting.
Quick question, if I may. Um, if the members of the public wanted to reach out to the members of the select board?
Nope.
With opinions or whatever?
Nope.
We can't make comments, how do we register opinions with the select?
You just did, you did tonight.
How do other people, like, do you receive letters?
The hearing is closed.
Hearing's closed.
You can, when a hearing closes, you can't receive any more testimony, you're done.
Okay, so a more general question, on any topic. The, does the town receive mail for the select board, or, like, what is the way that, I should already know this, that I, as a citizen, reach my select board members if I don't already know their, you know, cell phone numbers or whatever? Is there, is the, does the town, um, gather input for select board?
Yes. Yes.
Feel free to email or call me.
Okay, thank you.
You can address a letter to any one of us and send it to the town, it goes in a mailbox for each one of us.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
That's what you were trying to get to.
Yeah, it's on the webpage, if you click on, on the person's name, it'll come up. But just as, as clarity, that any information that would be regarded to the hearing on the specific thing that would go to a member needs to be communicated back to the board that that came in, and we can't do anything with it, that's, that's, like I said, the hearing's closed, the only information that we talked about that we're going to be able to look at is stuff that's already been presented and be able to just have some more time to absorb the stuff that was already presented. Nothing more can be, be put forward.
Okay. We're moving on.
What time is it?
Eight twenty-nine.
It's gotta be eight twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Michael Dalton's day.
That was rattling your teeth.
He was growing.
What's your bicycle?
You want to buy maybe?
Yes.
Uh, they're gonna.
I, I got. No, I got a meeting to get.
It comes to my town, mom.
You're a little.
Thank you, Dave, you did cleaning up nicely, you did wonderfully the other night.
I did that on purpose. Oh, yeah. I thought you were her, that's why I did it.
What we do with the.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
How's the chickens? Chaos. Somebody took them out, what were they anyways? Weren't they small?
Uh, I have tons of them.
How many?
Eleven ducks, thirty-eight chickens, eleven ducks.
Were they laying hens? So you just didn't want them anymore?
No.
Foxes. Didn't they get you any time? Foxes.
Yep, sorry, but I'm.
Better as we try.
They're still on TV, guys.
Where's the chairman Mao, is he, is he gonna start rolling this through fast, so that can get out of here?
Hope we're gonna be quick.
No to the tires. You, you want square ones?
Gonna be fast tonight, nope, 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 nope.
Need a lot of barrels if we don't have a comp actor.
Well, Noah just gets a lot of bears that way.
Where'd Mike go?
I don't know.
What, what's next? I'll take over.
I'll take over.
Town manager announcement.
But what is next?
Town, town manager.
No, I'm serious, go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, uh, I have two announcements tonight, the first is that we have advertised an RFQ for building and grounds maintenance. Proposals are due next Wednesday by twelve-thirty PM. And they'll be on the select board agenda for review on June twentieth. The second item is the fire truck contract, we have signed and executed the contract. Um, and those are the only two things that I have tonight.
So if the grounds come in, you just award them by low bid, you and the chair, is that okay with us, or?
It's fine, if the select.
Because I've been hearing some comments about not getting grass mowed and all this other stuff, so.
Yeah.
Hector.
Is that?
Yep.
Did you, did you pick up on that? You and him just got together with the grounds?
Yeah, yeah, I caught that, Bert.
It'll be low bid, right? Insurance, they have to have insurance. You've got some stuff to follow.
Got it.
Um, just for clarity, if him and I are handing, it's low bid, uh, but we have complaints.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair and the town manager to go through the bid process for the buildings and grounds, you know.
And I will second that.
To, to work with the bid process, make sure insurance is in line, and what, what did you put the RFP out for, a year or two years?
Two years.
Okay.
Within the terms of the bid, go ahead.
Motion and second?
Yes.
Ray?
If the complaints are about the center grove, the way it's being maintained, has been dictated by a panel and how they wanted it changed. So if people need to get ahold of Ryan, he's kind of chairing that up, to, to.
Brian Lumber?
Yes, to talk to him about it, um, because it was run by a committee and that's how they wanted it maintained.
Okay.
Nothing to do with.
So, so that, that discussion needs to happen between whoever is in charge of maintenance at the center grove and the town manager. Okay.
Got it. Okay. Motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next item up is, uh, the machine, the, uh, oh, this is you, you're, we're in, Brandon, you're still on this.
Yeah, uh, so on May sixteenth, the board authorized the chair now to purchase the twenty-twenty-two GMC Sierra thirty-five hundred from Springfield GMC. Uh, the cost of the truck was seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eight sixty. The cost of the headlights, plow and sander is twenty-one thousand, nine eighty-seven for a total truck cost of ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents. The dealership has offered us fourteen thousand for our two thousand twelve F-five fifty trade-in, and.
Brandon, can I stop you for a minute?
Yep.
Aren't we on the fire truck?
No, that's done.
I'm, oh, did I miss more, well, you did buildings and grounds. Aren't you in your?
I already gave the fire truck up there.
Your, your town manager report, right?
No. Although you said move on to the second item.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm catching up. I, I, I apologize, I had to.
It's okay.
Go to the bathroom.
Uh, Ray, do you want to release the information for the trade-in that you received?
Um, there's been a, I, I brought the truck to a couple different dealers, and I had one response from another dealer. A straight-up buy without a trade-in was twenty thousand dollars offered by Clamont Ford. Um, there's, there's. Yeah.
So the, it's a six thousand dollar difference. What does the board want to do with the trade-in?
Move, move, move to go to Clamont Ford for the sale. Cash price.
That's a guaranteed sale?
They, they said that that would be their offer, would be twenty thousand dollars.
Is that their offer, if we buy a truck from them, or is that, they're gonna buy the truck from us?
No, they said that if, without us buying a truck for them, it would be twenty thousand dollars. If we were to trade in with them and have a truck through them, it might possibly be more, but that's what it would be right now.
Do we, do we have that ready?
Yes, sir.
Take it.
I.
Depending on the timetable, you guys are working out.
Are we in the discussion?
Who?
Dave Mayhous.
Did you, you made a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded, discussion, go.
We have some times, there's a possibility you could offer it out to bid and have a minimum bid of that much money and see if you can get more. That's just a suggestion. You still have that ace in the hole, use it as a minimum bid. All right, we have the board.
Okay. Discussion, Paul?
No, go ahead.
Do you have any? What, you know, I'm sorry, what, what's your recommendation, Ray?
But you want? I don't have a recommendation on this one, I'm staying at that.
We did, I was personally involved in the last one, and Wes had drove it over to Stuart, and Stuart offered us. Um, the board gave me the authority to make the final call, and Stuart was gonna give us something like ten net, and we were trading with them, and then I said no, and Wes was a little upset, and we immediately put it up on, in Valley News, and we got like fourteen or fifteen. So I think twenty is a very strong price for what we have, and I would not wait, depending on the timetable of how we're gonna coordinate the new purchase.
Yep.
With the sale.
Kelly?
I think go for it.
Wendy? Okay. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. That means that motion was to, uh, sell the truck to.
Take the cash sale.
Take the cash, yeah.
Can I, can I wait until we get to the one first?
Yeah.
No, you gotta walk.
Get that forward in writing, right, for that, for that.
We have a letter.
Load that all, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so that means that we're locked in now for the seventy, seventy-three, seventy-five thousand? Where's, where's that?
It's ninety-something now.
Huh?
Ninety-seven total with the, with the.
Plow and all that.
Brandon just told us what it was, complete.
So we have seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents to deal with. Um, the town meeting article authorized the select board to borrow funds not to exceed seventy. Um, and Steve Hire has a proposal for how to finance the remainder of the truck.
Yeah, how do we short with this? Um, my suggestion is we borrow from our reserve funds. Same thing we did with the center grove three or four years ago, we borrowed a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from our reserves. So the interest we paid on that didn't go to the bank, it went back into our reserve funds. We already, we paid the reserve fund seventy-six thousand dollars, because we made two payments so far. So even if we borrow the seventy thousand dollars back from our reserves, we haven't gotten back to that hundred and ninety thousand dollars we originally bought from them. To me, it makes more sense to borrow from our reserves than it does to go out to the bank.
Just out of curiosity, how much interest does the bank account make? If it stays in there?
The bank account, we're gonna, we would pay ourselves two-point-seven-five percent if we borrow from the reserves. Our bank account makes about point zero-two percent. So this will be a huge increase in interest rates on the reserves.
And if we borrowed from the bank, the interest rate would be how much?
Two point, about two-point-seven-five percent.
Same.
So we would pay the market rate, so to speak.
Okay, so we'd pay the same thing if we went to a bank, but we're paying ourselves instead of the bank?
Yeah.
Dave, anything?
I already heard, Steve, I, I've already heard your comment about big bad Dave. You, you leaked out to, you leaked out to, you leaked out to Brandon and Mike, saying Dave's not gonna go along with this. He likes to borrow money from the bank, not ourselves.
True, Dave.
Exactly. You know my statement, I like to be clean. I'm okay doing what you guys want to do, the majority, so.
Paul?
I'd sooner borrow from the bank, but that's me. But I'm also, this is not my profession, as people would say.
Wendy? People love the way I run a meeting, they keep making talk.
I, I guess, um, at this point, I think we could just borrow from ourselves.
Yeah?
I'd say borrow from ourselves, we, better we get the money than the bank.
Okay.
I want to make another comment.
Okay.
Here, here's the danger for doing that. We have Steve. He's very good at books. We've had rotating finance people. We've had a finance person before where we had money owed on the destruction of the Perkinsville School, and they forgot about a forty thousand dollar entry into the thing that we had to make up. So there's risk in doing these internal financial maneuvers. There's no risk when you get a loan from the bank, because they say, give me, here's your, here's your note and here's the bill, give it to me back. So that's the danger, we have.
Plus the protection.
There is, what Dave says, there's truth in what Dave says. Because when I started twenty-three years ago doing this job, we had zero cash in our reserves. We had spent all of our reserve money, we hadn't known the books that we had these reserves, we had zero cash. And that was a, more of a, um, delinquent tax issue than anything else. We now have a written agreement with ourselves, we have auditors who will enforce this if we forget, if we forget to do it, the auditors will make us do it.
Okay?
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Okay? Any further discussion?
So what are we voting on now? What's the motion on the floor now? To just borrow money for ourselves, but, but have you, did you factor in the actual note? What the note is? What, what was the term?
Five, I mean, what I, you can set whatever you want. My suggestion is it's seventy thousand dollars. We, we borrowed over five years at two-point-seven-five percent interest.
Uh, and, and so what did the article say? A hundred thousand and not to borrow any more than seventy, is that what the article said? Okay, then the next question is for the board or the chair, how do we make up the seven thousand dollars? Because you just took twenty for the truck, the top end of the new truck is ninety-seven, if you borrow seventy, you're short seven.
They get thirty from theirs.
Thirty?
We get.
Thirty from their reserves.
Plus she voted to use thirty out of the equipment reserves.
Okay, so I just want to know the complete package here, so when you, so we don't need thirty then, right? Because it's, it's, it's gonna be twenty-seven.
Right.
Or no, yeah, it's three short, okay. All right, I'm on, I want to know all the whole.
Yeah, no.
Good.
So the motion should, should be for both then, to borrow from ourselves and to pay seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents from reserves?
Seven thousand?
Yep. Because you're borrowing seventy thousand, and then there's another seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Four ninety-five.
It completes the package of the purchase of the new truck.
You lost me on the seven thousand, because I'm, it, the total purchase is around ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven, something.
So when it comes time to buy that, you have to come back to the board and ask you to take money out of the reserves.
Oh, okay, so Brandon, state that number again, please.
Seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty cents.
On top of the seventy, so, so we need to authorize seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Of which seventy thousand is a note from ourselves, correct?
Yep, a promis, a promissory note from ourselves.
At two, for five years for two-point-seven-five percent?
Yep.
Correct? Does that sound right, Steve? Dave?
Yes, but Ray just said something that, 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 what, did you say, that the bill won't be due until the body gets put on?
I'm wrong, Brandon, it's just for the truck as it is right now, that doesn't include the plow and the sander.
Yeah, but we count twenty thousand for the tra, the trade, is what?
We haven't got that yet.
It, it includes the plow and sander, the total package for ninety-seven thousand.
Yeah, but you're subtracting the twenty that we're gonna get from Ford, weren't you?
Yes.
Okay, guys.
Respectfully, I suggest you're making this too complicated.
I could not agree more, Steve, I want a motion to, for seventy thousand dollars for five years.
Yes.
Uh, to borrow from ourselves for two-point-seven-five percent. That's the motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion to borrow seventy thousand dollars. Hey, guys? Hey, guys? Thank you. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, um, and a second, to borrow seventy thousand dollars from reserves for five years from ourselves, um, at two-point-seven-five percent. Any further discussion? My question is, is that the seven thousand Brandon's talking about and the other balance necessary for the purchase of the plows and stuff, that's, happens at a different time. Some of that money comes out of reserve, or all of them?
All of that is authorized by the voters in the article that was passed.
Correct, so that's just after the fact. So right now, we're just dealing with this, this portion of it. Okay, any further discussion? Alright, motion on the floor, all those in favor of borrowing 70,000 dollars for five years at 2.75% from our own reserves, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'm a nay.
You're a nay?
You didn't ask.
Yeah, I just so used everybody, I apologize. We note that we do have one nay, it's Paul Tillman.
You don't have to note my name, but you're welcome.
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
I'm a nay, same.
You don't mind owning it? Okay, next. Request to purchase tires with reserve funds. We have two options for motions here, so I guess we're gonna have to, it's a matter of where we're gonna borrow the money from. Who's speaking to this, Brandon?
I can start, so we're approaching year end and a Scottney Fire Department is projected to be at 96% of their budget. Chief Spalding went to Daniel's inspection station to inspect all their fire trucks and they learned that one of their trucks needs new tires. I'll let you go ahead from here, Darren.
So when I put my budget together over a year ago, let you guys know, the ladder truck tires were in the budget. Well, Engine 4 needed four rear tires. And I know that blew my budget right out of the water for vehicle maintenance. So my tires have come in for the front of the ladder, the steer tires, because it took a while to get, and now I'm at 90 foot range, just said 96%, 94%. And I got a state quote from Pete's Tire at 8.
3,000.
863.50 or two, those steer tires, Michelin's. Per tire, yes. And also with that, we did some fundraising before we signed the contract that we were gonna buy aluminum rims to put on the front of that truck. Cause it's aluminum rims, the brakes don't heat up, they cool down quicker is what we're saying versus steel. So I want to take the money out of my chief's account just to buy the rims so I can get this deal taken care of. The truck's not gonna pass inspection.
So the money for the rims is coming out of a, basically a personal account of the Fire Department?
Correct.
Has nothing to do with taxpayer dollars?
Correct.
Okay, so the part that we're dealing with is the tires.
Tires.
At 3,454 dollars, correct?
863.50 times two is a little over 1700.
What is the?
You wanted four of those, Darren, it's 3,400.
Two, there's only two tires on the front.
Okay, so.
So the money's gonna change.
Okay, so here's, what I have here is a vote to transfer 3,454 dollars from the firefighting equipment and gear for the purchase of tires and rims. Okay, so you're saying you're gonna pay for the rims?
Darren.
Darren?
Yes, Dave.
You saying you're gonna pay for the tire, the rims?
The rims.
And how much is that?
The rims?
Yes.
4.50 apiece.
900?
Times four?
Times two.
Times two. Okay, so 900.
That screen is screwed up, okay? They're, that screen is asking for too much money. That screen is asking for four tires, he's asking for two.
Right.
Okay.
He's wrong.
Brandon?
The rims have nothing to do with it.
I just need a number for the tires.
Yeah, how much is each tire, Darren, again?
I said 863.50 times two.
863.50.
1727, correct? Is that what you got?
I just, I just have a statement, I, I thought you said we needed four tires.
1727 even.
We had already put four on the back of Engine 4 that was not in the budget because they would pass.
Okay.
I don't, we don't need to take this out of reserves then.
Huh?
We don't need to take this out of reserves.
Okay.
My understanding was that it was 3,400 dollars, not 1,600 dollars, so I don't think.
So we don't need to vote at all?
Yeah, this whole agenda item is just not relevant.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wouldn't have voted to take out reserve firefighting gear anyways.
Me either.
I don't know where it would have gone, but it wouldn't have gone out of there.
Sort of came in.
Huh?
Sort of came in.
No.
Okay, so we're moving on.
Yep.
Yep.
Taking that one right off.
Motion to approve application for fireworks display. Sponsor of the display, Mark Gerard, I see him over there. Hello, Mark? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the fireworks permit from Mark Gerard. For, what's the date?
July 1st.
July 1st, 2022.
Do I hear a second?
Second it, but I think we should make him wait, no, just kidding.
Wait for it, he's waited all night already.
Been lost all night.
Okay, I, I see that the police chief has signed off, the fire warden has signed off, a Scottney volunteer Fire Department chief has signed off and the West Weathersfield Fire Chief has also signed off. Darren is both because he's the fire warden and a Scottney fire. So that's all been checked, this is being put on by a professional outfit?
Yeah.
Yeah, not the first time they've, they've done it either, they've signed theirs. Any discussion? I hear none, there's a motion on the floor, any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're good?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you're home, go to bed.
Next is the update on the.
Can we, can you move the agenda?
I can.
Can you go to the transfer station?
Let's go to the tra, okay.
I'm 15, trash compactor replacement.
Yeah. We're there, trash compactor replacement. He was over there talking trash.
You can thank me later for opening the door. You're gonna owe me.
I know.
Okay. Who's starting this, Brandon?
We have some pictures of the, of the existing state of the compactor here. And Matt, if you want to go into that a little bit?
So your existing state of your compactor, I believe it was bought used and one of you probably know when, but it was quite a long time ago. So now you've got pretty good wear going in it, you've got a lot of rock, it's actually got four to six inch gapping so that when you're actually compacting, you're pushing trash outside the receiver box and not where it's supposed to go. It also allows vermin access to live in it, which is not a good thing because that kind of attracts a lot of creatures underneath there. It's not a concrete surface down underneath where that compactor sits, so it is not a very pleasant place to be if you're a driver and you pull that. Then you also have your power pack, when was your power pack changed, Ray? That one's pretty old.
I think it was 2002.
Yeah, so you're way past, we've already done a couple quick fixes on certain things down there for you. But you're at, you're at life's end at this compactor, basically. There's maybe a little bit of value in resale, I know that the company that I do a lot of work with for my compactors, my company, that we took up there, said there might be a small amount of value, I don't know what the value is because they do rebuild them. I'm not recommending you guys have that one rebuilt to go in there. The newer units are a different technology as far as how the rails, how hydraulic cylinders operate, they pack better. So, any questions?
Just one comment, the, the compactor right now, the whole area is lower than the grade of the whole parking lot.
Exactly where I was gonna go.
So that's why we have the concrete work in there.
Well, it's also on dirt on some of that back in there, so it's bad.
This is part of the assessment that's in the, where we were just getting ready to go to. Dave?
Have you, have you got an RFP ready to go out on this?
I don't have the RFP ready, but it can be ready this week.
I, when I spoke with Brandon this afternoon, told him that I was gonna be late or might not come or whatever, I talked a little bit about this. I don't, I think this is Weathersfield responsibility, not Redding or West Windsor, they are partners with us, but we own the facility. I, did I read the number right, it's about 30,000 dollars?
Yep.
Your, your trash compactor is, well, and this is January 1st, so we've gone through two different steel cycles. I tried to call for an actual, they only give you like a week on these. So your compactor, your four yard compactor is 27,000. You have five foot guide tracks, which actually guide your receiver box in, those are around 500. Freight charge is 550, so you're at 29,768.75, not counting any concrete work. But then you also have to take in consideration that's just the unit. It still has to be cut away from your pit. And then it has to be welded back in to your pit after the concrete is, work is done, which is wholesomer.
Now, when you say the pit, what are you referring to when you say?
Where you guys throw your trash into, so you throw your trash into a pit, which then goes into this four yard stationary compactor?
Yes.
Which then goes into a 42 yard octagon receiver box.
Yeah, what I want to get at is, from what I saw when I was there, that pit needs some serious attention too. Some welding and.
The pit actually isn't bad because when we raise the concrete like we were talking about, so we're gonna raise that level to try to shed water away from all this.
Yep.
You're gonna lose that compromised section of the pit.
Right.
So we're actually raising up into the good steel section. We've done, I've gone through these guys with some oiling and stuff. There's a lot of things to do too to the new compactor that wasn't being done to the old compactor that some of us that use these all the time have helped these guys with on lubricating and kind of make it last longer.
Okay, and so, so that work on the pit is already included in?
No, no, this is just buying a unit, having it show up on a truck and setting it on the ground.
Okay.
We still have, and I think we got a concrete quote, right?
It's an older one, yeah.
Yeah, ballpark, but then there's still gonna be some welding and fabrication, not a huge amount, but some.
I'm gonna make a motion to let the town manager assemble an RFP with Ray and he's gonna gather the information and put out an RFP for the board to consider. I don't want this compactor to have a baby calf and us not be prepared.
Especially in the winter.
Right.
Well, and I, it was my understanding, that's what Brandon was trying to get to, was actually even something to do with a special meeting?
It depends on how we want to buy it. So if we're gonna take out a loan, then we would need a special meeting and we can do that in August.
No, I don't want to wait that long.
You're gonna run into trouble because you need to get concrete and stuff in there, this is gonna be a little bit of a, I mean, it's, it's a, it's happening.
We got ARPA money.
Set up.
Well, we have ARPA money and we also have rainy day funding.
Yeah.
Yep, so those are two.
And I don't, at this point.
It's a rainy day, that brings all rust.
At this point, you, you guys just went through the relationship with, with Redding and Windsor, so I don't want to rock the boat. I think we want to get along and it's our job to have a compactor that's gonna work, so.
I couldn't agree more.
I, I just think that you should have a proposal put forward to whatever that they're talking about, so we can see it and then you can measure it from there, whether it's gonna be 40,000 or 45,000.
And where it's gonna come from.
And then you'll get an idea whether this one's worth 5,000 in trade or make some deal, I want to hear the deal.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for.
To assemble an RFP for the transfer station to replace the compactor.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Can I ask just one question?
Sure.
This is a, a statement, I guess, a question. This is a time of an essence thing, so with this RFP, like it all has to go pretty smoothly because asking somebody to do concrete in October on something like this is a tough order and I don't want to see you guys go into next winter. That receiver box and that compactor, I don't have a lot of faith in it going into the winter.
And I couldn't agree more. I, I think everybody here.
I've gone up too many Saturdays to look at that stuff, but I don't want to be in the winter treading bandana.
I'm full agreement, obviously, but I'm just curious, it just barely rusted out? Did we just barely find out that this thing was gonna?
No.
We've known about this for a while, right?
Yes, yeah, it's been on the radar for quite some time.
I wouldn't go that far, but it's something that has to be.
It's gotten a lot worse. And regardless, I've only dealt with it for now for a year, but in the year, of course, the other thing is we have an old receiver box. When the Casella contract ended, they brought you back whatever box they felt like bringing you back. So now you've got a worn out receiver box and you've got a worn out compactor.
They saw the writing on the wall.
So.
This has been in the works for over three years, at least since 2018, trying to replace this.
Yeah, I just don't know why it's taking so long.
Well, when you get the RFP assembled, there's no, he can send it out, doesn't need to come back for board approval. The approval would come 30 days or however the days are that you feel like attaching to the RFP, it could be two weeks. It could be whatever that you seem appropriate to put out a.
How about a?
I think the message coming from Matt and, and from Dave, and I would say myself, and Paul, is what's the shortest timeline that we can do this in?
So I will advertise an RFP tomorrow, bids would be due, is June 30th, okay? And the first meeting in July, we review it on July 6th?
Not a good time for the response.
Okay. So I will advertise an RFP tomorrow.
What's the first meeting in July?
The 5th.
5th?
Yeah, and it's on a Tuesday.
5th is gonna be a holiday, guaranteed.
Well, the 4th is.
4th is Monday.
Oh, the 4th is Monday?
Yeah, so the select board meeting is on Tuesday.
I mean, Saturday's the 5th. Saturday's the 2nd, I'm getting tired. Saturday just became.
Do we take the vote for the RFP?
Yes.
Aye.
Well, hang, hang on, I'm trying to get the timeline shortened up, is what I'm trying to do. Do we have to go that long, Brandon?
It's not gonna be ready on the 20th.
Go 30 days.
Yeah.
It'll give everybody.
Which, that's July, you'd be awarding beginning of July, so that would be fine, you could get it on the books. Normally a compactor, whether it comes from, there's like three different compactor companies depending on who.
But you also got the concrete contractor that's gotta get in there and protect them.
They're like four weeks out, you got, so that would probably work.
They gotta be, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brandon, you know what to do?
I do.
I did an hour ago.
I'll catch up with you tomorrow, Matt.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. You too, Tyler. So, um, to the board, where do you want to go?
What time is it?
9:03.
9:03.
I'm, I'm not, I don't feel like getting into money tonight. Didn't you say before, Mr. Chairman, that you probably were gonna have a separate money meeting to be talking about?
I think that would be probably a good idea.
Is there, is there anything left for Steve to talk about tonight?
Can I identify the high priority items for tonight?
What do you mean, well, high priority items where?
For tonight, for tonight's meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Item number 13, if you want to circle that one, 14, 16, 17, which are quick, and 19. So 13, 14, 16, 17, and 19, if we can get through those.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was it, as long as we're letting everybody out early, was there anything that Steve was?
I'm staying.
Oh, you're staying no matter what?
No, I wanna make sure I understand what you guys are doing with those items.
Oh, all of those, oh gosh.
Alright, item 13, fiscal year 22 emergency management expense. I gotta find my way to it now.
Yeah, let me get back up there as well. So during, during FY 22, we've had various emergency management related expenditures which are listed in Attachment A. Steve compiled that, that sheet there. And what we're looking to do is have the select board approve those expenses and send them to ARPA so we can remove them from the budget.
You mean from the ARPA budget?
No, remove them from the general fund budget, they're currently sitting in the emergency management line.
An expense line?
Yep.
What was the total, my screen's off, been off for an hour.
Well, the board already approved the, the small business grant, so that's 12,000 of it. We also have the ServPro cleaning, which was 91630. COVID testing, 859 dollars and masks.
Do you have a total?
A new projector, 26,736.71 cents.
And that, that, you need a motion to move that from the general fund expenses to ARPA?
To ARPA.
So moved.
Motion, good man, seconded, all those, or any further discussion?
Let's get the number right in the motion, 26,000, what was it?
736.71.
Okay, did the, did the minutes get that? Oh.
Okay, any further discussion?
From general fund expenses to ARPA.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Water District Project, number 14.
Alright, so.
Table this?
No. What?
What?
We can't.
We can't, just listen to you.
Oh, is it money you need?
Yeah, it's...
All right, so I, I removed that motion.
So the select board authorized seventy-five thousand dollars to the Escutney Water District Stabilization Project. We've moved forward with that project with the state, and we have completed the advertising for Phase One. Phase One and Phase Two will leverage the remaining funding on February first of two thousand twenty-three for the entire Water District Project. So what we're asking for is to split the money up into phases, and the first phase will be twenty-nine thousand, five hundred from the ARPA funds to the Water District to pay for Phase One and Phase Two, and the remaining forty-five thousand for Phase Three, which will be completed next fall. The Prudential Committee held the meeting and got together and signed this letter to the board to make that request.
Didn't we already just say we could give them money?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're just making sure that, that, um...
Sorry, Matt.
And we need the actual motion, oh, we don't need to?
No.
Okay. If they are, if you folks have already approved, you've already authorized seventy-five thousand dollars' worth of ARPA money to go to the water project?
Okay.
Then, fine, when it goes, you guys don't want to dig that deep into the weeds.
No.
No.
Okay.
No, so we can work it out.
Okay, well, Steve and I will work it out this week. Thanks, Steve.
Wendy, I see your name on here, so you're okay with that, right? If it all works out okay? Okay, very good.
I just know we have some deadlines to that.
Highway TA sixty form.
Ray? This is the annual form that we fill out saying that we spend at least a minimum amount of money in order to get our funding from the state, which we are well over. The board always signs off on it every year, saying that we spend that much money and invest it in our highways so we can get our assistance from the state of Vermont.
Need a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-three annual financial plan for the town highways per nineteen DSA Section three oh six J.
So moved.
Oh, you're second?
Yes.
Have a motion in a second to approve the financial plan for town highways. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Grants in aid program.
This again is an annual signature from the select board saying that we follow Act sixty-four standards for building roads, which we're doing. And it allows us to put the grant, put in for the grants and aid funding, which would be about thirty-three thousand or maybe more, a minimum of thirty-three thousand dollars a town would get grants and aid.
Need a, a motion to authorize the chair to sign a letter of intent to participate in the, uh, what does S stand for on that?
Just a grants and aid.
Well, it says S-F-Y twenty-three in the, Brandon?
Don't know.
Brandon?
State fiscal year.
State fiscal year twenty-three minutes, the roads grant in aid program. Okay, thank you, sorry.
So moved.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, those, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And last but not least...
I thought the motion said to make the chair pay for all the highway funds forever.
Yes, and I'm making the check out to Mr. Fuller.
Excellent.
Plains Road.
Excellent.
So you're getting the check then?
Excellent.
He's really tired.
Yeah, but it's got two names on it, and I have to sign it too, so I get half.
Can I have it cash, please?
Yes. Okay, we're just kidding. Okay, last but not least, transfer Mark Memorial Hall project expenses to reserves or ARPA.
Um, so this is, this is just housekeeping, we just don't know where to move this project downstairs to, whether it be to reserves or if we're gonna pay for it with ARPA. So that's what we're trying to figure out.
How much money did it come to total?
Twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars.
The renovation down here?
Yes.
The water or whatever? Do we need to make that tonight at this hour?
We'd like to get it cleaned up before year end.
Okay.
Um, so that's kind of why I put all these on the agenda.
I don't want it to come out of the reserves at this point. I think we've got bigger fish to decide with the building, so I'm not really sure.
So you want to take it out of the ARPA? That's the other choice.
Is it allowable?
It is.
It is?
It is.
Yeah, we claim, yeah.
We tried to claim insurance and they denied us as water.
We claim our ARPA money as lost revenue, even though we didn't have any lost revenue. We lost a ten million dollars in ARPA money. We can just by default claim it all as lost revenue, even though we don't have any. But, and, and then we can do whatever we want to with it.
Well, and it's not, if you put it in this perspective, I, I know that this now downstairs is being rented again.
It is.
So there's a lot of people that are coming down here to use the building?
There are.
And they couldn't, so it was lost revenue.
Exactly, so, no, and it was loss of space.
Yes.
Common space.
Public.
Common, public space.
Yes, right.
What was the total, twelve?
Twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-nine, forty-eight.
Did the minutes get that? I'll make the motion that we approve it, the expense, and move it to the ARPA fund for budget purposes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to move the Mark Memorial Hall project expenditure, which is the downstairs repairs of twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars, forty-eight cents to the ARPA funds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, Brandon, let's work on the next agenda. I think, first of all, Dave, you mentioned a special meeting. How soon you all want to do a special meeting to start talking about finances? We do have to wrap up and do the tax rate fairly quickly at this point.
I think it's a good idea that when we meet and talk about it, that we don't necessarily are intended on making the decisions that night because unless he, unless the town manager sends us out information a little bit stronger than what, that we can read ahead of the meeting, that that's probably a really good idea. So if it, when's our next scheduled meeting, the twenty-fourth?
It's the twentieth.
Twenty.
Well, here, let me put this question out to the board. How would you feel about either another meeting this week or Tuesday of next week? For the sole purpose of those, that discussion, the fiscal year financials, tax rate discussion? Is there anything else that ties in with that, Brandon?
I, I just want to comment, um, I mean, of course, a meeting could occur without me being present, but I have other obligations for the remaining of the week. So I won't be available this week.
So Tuesday would work better for you next week?
It would.
Me too.
I can't do Tuesday.
Okay, Wednesday? What, what, what day works for you?
I could do the sixteenth.
What day is that, what day is that?
Uh, that's Thursday.
That's Thursday of next week? How's everybody feel about that? Thursday, okay?
I'm open.
Kelly?
When is, when is, when are you thinking about making some decisions before the thirtieth? So you think that we're gonna actually make decisions, but on the twentieth, that's the day, or?
Brandon, no, no, uh, the tw- I don't know. I don't, I was just gonna turn to Brandon and ask him that, what do you see as the, when do you have to have a final decision from us, Brandon, in order to meet printing and mailing?
July fifth.
But that doesn't answer my question, because my question would be, are we going to either move money to reserves? And it's, it's more of a bookkeeping issue on the thirtieth of June, our year end.
Right.
We, we did that once before, and it ended up spilling over into July, and then we said, oh, now we have a bookkeeping mess.
Here, here's how I see it, we meet next week, which is the sixteenth on Thursday. Then we have a meeting on the twentieth, which is Monday.
And that's, that's good.
If we're not done, we still have time to, to get another meeting in, another special meeting in, if need be.
Because you have actually after that, the rest of that week, and then a...
Like ten days, don't we? Something like that, close?
We usually don't, don't have homesteaders.
Almost two weeks. Personally? Yes. I don't think you need, and Brandon, you may think otherwise, so I apologize. But, um, we haven't talked about this much. I think you can make, just if you're trying to make decisions about whether you're gonna move money into reserves or not, I think you can make that decision July or even in August. You know, the state of our accounting is not great because of the vacancies we have. So it's not impossible that there could be a few sort of surprises as we close the books. And usually, we, we like to wait to make decisions about transfers until things are pretty much over and done with. So if you're looking for... I, I, I think, you, you correct me if I'm wrong, as far as you see, I, I don't think it's so much a worry, at, at least for me, about where the, where those accounts are or what transfers. I think it's setting the tax rate and getting that accomplished. And whether or not we need to use any money from fund balances or, or reserves, whatever, or not. I, I think those are the conversations that... I don't, you can't set the school tax rate, obviously, until July, when it comes from the state. Right. You want to set the, the town tax rate early, you can. I don't know that that, that pretty much was set by the budget. What is your recommendation on the timeline, Steve? Setting the tax rate?
Yeah.
If you want to set it now, you can set it now. The grand list is done, that's the big key, so you could set it on the twentieth. Or you could wait until we have the school tax. Traditionally, we've waited and done the town and the school tax at the same time in the first part of July. Mostly, that involves the fact that the grand list hasn't been ready until late June or early July. I think the grand list is already filed and set. There's no rush, but I'm not sure that the details are gonna change much if you wait. So you could set the town tax rate anytime you want. Well, then let me ask, do you still feel it's necessary to meet like next Thursday, or just?
Well, here's, here's why I say what I say. As long, as far as I can remember, we, we had surpluses in, in at least the general fund and the highway fund on six thirty twenty-one. We did nothing with them for a year. They're floating around in their individual accounts. We've carried them forward to now it's crowding in on six thirty twenty-two. We didn't put any, and we didn't take any actions, as far as I can remember, on moving any of the surplus funds from six thirty twenty-one to reserve accounts. It just stayed in the general... Yeah, we did, I get that, but that's what I want to know. I want to know, I don't want...
Yeah.
I, I'd like to know what it is documented, not unknown. And there was a time that it did matter that something happened, uh, that needed to be by the year end. So that's all I'm asking for.
Right, and, and that's fine, and, and I'm, I'm willing to do next Thursday if you think it's necessary.
And I'll, yeah, I, I do want to meet because, because we did, we were supposed to take it up tonight and we're not.
Right.
And, and, um, um, there is some things that are a little bit different than any other year. When was the last year you remembered that a surplus occurred in the general fund of two hundred thousand dollars? That's a little eye-opening. We'd like to know where that comes from, I would. And it's not normal, so is it gonna happen, is it gonna happen again? Question number one, or how did it happen? So there's some things to sort out, so I do, I do think we're supposed to...
So next Thursday?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay, the sixteenth. You want a discussion about what happened in twenty twenty-one that we ended up with, the surpluses we ended up with?
Well, there's, there is a number on six thirty twenty-one that was audited by all of our accounts. So, so it is, so it's the general fund, and it'll be the highway fund, and they never, they very rarely go into solvency.
You want a discussion about, wow, that's more money than we expected, what happened?
Yep, and then what's left?
It is, it is customary that a surplus gets applied to a budget two years later, just because of the way things cycle through. When you're doing your budget in the fall, the audit is happening, and there's usually not a final number. So it's customary that the twenty twenty-one surplus gets discussed when you are developing the budget for, um, for next year. Twenty twenty-three.
I, I do remember, though, in twen- in six thirty twenty, that the board took up action shortly after the thirtieth because we put money into the fire equipment reserve fund, we put money in a half a police cruiser. We did some things in, within August or September after the six twenty, so we did not carry that. We didn't go two years of that. Last year was completely absent of any board action, though. It's floating around in the general fund. I use that term loosely.
Because we went through most of the year without anybody in the finance director position.
Yep.
It took us a long time to close the books.
Yep.
And it was probably prudent for you folks not to make assumptions until we were, we were sure where we were. And I think that's all David's...
That's all I'm gonna look for.
Not make assumptions moving into setting the next tax rate. Are you not suggesting, are you suggesting that you might want to lower the tax rate as a result of a large surplus?
Well, you, you've made this statement before, which I agree with. So when the voters voted on the articles, they voted on a dollar amount. That dollar amount will then be divided into the grand list whenever that's finished. So no one can change that. I am suggesting and will propose that in the, in the event that, that Brandon kind of uncovered that dollar amount that got, that got set aside for a particular parcel of property that's been reconciled, that the taxpayers did in fact pay that dollar amount in under an amount of three years, and I will advocate that that get back, go back to them, because that's where it came from. Now, the, that's about sixty-nine thousand or whatever it is, dollars. Maybe it's a little bit lower because the BCA voted to, uh, to, in the meeting down here, to, um, what do they call that?
Bay twenty-one.
Yes. Now, that's all okay. And, but, the budgets, as they were proposed under twenty-two, twenty-three, did raise taxes a little bit. I'm hoping to offset that, that's my goal.
So that's what Dave's point is, that's all. I, I think he's trying to clarify for Steve what he's thinking about what to do with, with the tax rate that we're gonna set. I tend to, I don't really want to raise taxes, but I don't know, i- if, based on the grand list and the numbers Dave's talking about, let's say the tax rate comes in and it's up a penny, do we have the funds somewhere that we can offset that so we don't create the increase? That's all.
And, and, and I envision it myself, I envisage it like this. Since you can't do that in, in the highway fund tax rate or the general fund tax rate, because that's explicit in the voted article, you would have on everybody's tax bill a credit of whatever we want to talk about, similar to when Larry Moline was here, and there was a charge for us to make up a deficit on the general fund, because everybody got really hot under the collar about that, about now it was a delinquent, it got worded really wrongly, it said delinquent tax fee or something, and it wasn't. It was a, it was a shortfall in the general fund. But that, I think that's something we should talk about.
And that's, and I think there's another side of that, where I'm not sure it's wise to decrease the tax rate, because then you're just going to increase it again, and people aren't going to remember why this is being increased. And I, but I think all the money needs to go back to, to people, and maybe it needs to go back to them over the course of future years when we don't raise the tax rate as much as we otherwise would need to, but that's probably a discussion. Also for, yeah, Thursday or the twentieth or whatever, where we discuss the, the actual financials. Lucky I won't be able to make it next Thursday. So, so on Thursday, we're having, that, that meeting will just be for these financial items that are on here.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, tax rate discussion, year-to-date financials, year-to-date input, projections, and fund balances. Okay, that's item twenty and twenty-one. And then the rest, I, I'm just gonna have to say we, we move to the twentieth.
That's fine.
That's all we can do, anything?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to say that I am still on the call.
Okay, and who are you?
Joseph Buble, item twenty-four, Section E.
Appointments.
Oh, 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 oh.
Although the conversations have been riveting, I wouldn't mind going through the appointment process.
Brandon, did you get a chance to, um, check the statutes or recommendations on a person being on the corner position and the zoning board?
Yeah, actually, Brandon threw town council and it was vetted.
And...
It's right here if you want the articles.
The answer is...
The answer is?
The answer is?
There's no issue.
There's no issue. Okay. Appointment, Joseph Buble to the zoning board of adjustment?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to the zoning board.
Thanks. One more committee.
There's no award for that.
No, I just don't know anybody else here in town, so what a better way to meet people.
No, thank you very much for your, for your service. I do appreciate it. Uh, approval warrants. Motion to approve the warrants?
I'm making a motion to approve warrant for meeting of June 6th, 2022, uh, for general fund payroll, $21,652.42, operating expenses, $47,207.98, highway fund payrolls, $12,306.83, operating expenses, $46,697.88. It's always management fund. Uh, payroll, uh, $2,581.59, operating expense is $2,151.59. Library payroll is $2,986.62, zero operating expense. The Tanning Tree Memorial, um, operating expense would be $1,855. Uh, for grand totals, a payroll of $39,527.46, and operating expense of $90,000, uh, $97,912.45.
I just got it. Any discussion on the warrants?
I do. I wanna know why, in the highway department, why is someone, did someone work in overtime?
What page are we on?
I'm looking under, well, for three weeks in a row. We had someone on 5/19, Donald Huntley, made 6/15, and then two weeks in a row afterwards, he made 800 and something.
Um, he went, worked, worked the transfer station, that should have been billed to the transfer station.
Oh, okay, so they included it all in one then, probably?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's split up after the fact.
Okay.
So the payroll is, like, you don't get two paychecks, so if he wouldn't get a paycheck for working in the transfer station, and a paycheck...
Well, I have to ask.
Yeah, I know, I got to ask. It's a good question.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming all the police, very much escalated costs is being reimbursed by income?
By pipe industry's income, yeah.
So, so that's, yeah, okay.
That one I know.
If you look at the totality of that, that's not...
Yeah, I know, I did.
Knew that one was gonna...
You just add them.
That's all I had on that.
Dave, anything else? Any further discussion, Paul? Wendy? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the warrants? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other business?
I just got two things. Did, uh, you get your porta potty for the fishing derby for next weekend?
It's ordered.
Okay, and, uh, I just wanna let everyone know that I got a letter in the mail. There's a BAC meeting next week on the 14th at 7 o'clock. Budget, the Board of Abatement.
Board, yeah.
Was there a, was there a, uh...
There, I just got it today.
Was there a list of what?
There's, there's one person that's abating their taxes. Is that off?
It should be posted on the town website, right?
Is that off?
Last year.
No, the meeting's not closed yet.
No, it should be posted on the town website, right?
There was only one?
There was one person that was abating their taxes, and then they wanted...
It's the BAC meeting on the, so...
Yeah, BAC and... The permission to do their under $5 thing for people.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so everybody be looking for a BAC notice from Floanne.
I received it, and I let her know I will not be there.
Okay, so thank you.
Move to adjourn.
So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is a non-abatable motion.